Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be starting in just a couple of moments. I apologize for the delay. This December 5th, 2019, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the West Springfield High School Chamber Orchestra, under the direction of Jennifer Pereira. Wasn't that beautiful? Fantastic, thank you. In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on December 5th, 2019, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Hines, seconded by Ms. Strauss, all those in favor. Ms. Strauss, Ms. Hines, Mr. Moon, Ms. Kees-Gamara, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Evans, Ms. Corbett Sanders, those opposed, those abstaining. Ms. Palczek and Mr. Wilson and Ms. Schultz is away from the table. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Ms. Darnak Kofax is absent this evening. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda... A copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live, online. Select "School Board" on the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meeting's webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I call on Ms. Boating for an announcement.
Human Rights Day is observed every year on December 10th, the day the United Nations General Assembly adopted in 1948 the United Declaration of Human Rights. This year, Human Rights Day marks the 71st anniversary of the United Declaration of Human Rights, a milestone document that proclaimed the inalienable rights which everyone is inherently entitled to as a human being, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political, or other opinion, or other opinion, national, or social origin, property, birth, or other status. It is the most translated document in the world, available in more than 500 languages. Drafted by representatives of diverse legal and cultural backgrounds from all regions of the world, the Declaration sets out universal values and common standard of achievement for all peoples and all nations. It establishes the equal dignity and worth of every person. Thanks to the Declaration and state's commitments to its principles, the dignity of millions has been uplifted and the foundation for a more just world has been laid. While its promise is yet to be fully realized, the very fact that it has stood the test of time is a testament to the enduring universality of perennial values of equality, justice, and human dignity. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all. The principles enshrined in the Declaration are as relevant today as they were in 1948. We need to stand up for our own rights and those of others. We can take action in our own daily lives to uphold the rights that protect us all and thereby promote the kinship of all human beings. Thank you.
Virginia is home to over 73,000 military-connected school-age students, more than any other state in the nation. All of our Fairfax County Public Schools proudly welcome and support over 14,000 military-connected youth and their families who are part of our school community. Tonight, we are honoring 18 of our schools who have been awarded the Purple Star designation. At this time, I would like to recognize Colonel Greenberg, Garrison Commander of the Fort Belvoir Military Installation. Colonel Greenberg, will you please join me at the podium? So in 2018, the Virginia Department of Education established the Purple Star designation to be awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Criteria established for the award were designed to increase educator awareness of military-connected youth and help schools structure their support to and for military-connected youth and their families. In the inaugural year, 14 of Fairfax County Public Schools received the Purple Star recognition. Schools that earned this prestigious designation received a resolution from the Virginia State Superintendent, Dr. James Lane, and a special Purple Star recognition to display in their school. The Purple Star Award serves to set each of these schools apart for the hard work of the faculty, students, parents, and community partners who stand together to ensure that our military-connected students are supported academically, behaviorally, and emotionally during their transitions. We thank the FCPS school staff and students from these 18 schools earning the recognition this year for their warm welcoming environment to their military-connected students, and we thank our military families for keeping our nation strong and safe. The following schools have received this prestigious designation. Carl Sandburg Middle School. You want to come up? Colleagues, why don't you all join us at the dais? Or on the stairs so we can get everybody in the pictures. Fairhill Elementary School. Fort Hunt Elementary School. Franconia Elementary School. Gunston Elementary School. Hayfield Elementary School. The Key Center School. Laurel Ridge Elementary School. Mosby Woods Elementary School. Mount Vernon High School. Orange Hunt Elementary School. Riverside Elementary School. Saratoga Elementary School. Stratford Landing Elementary School. Walt Whitman Middle School. Washington Mill Elementary School. W.T. Woodson High School. Woodley Hills Elementary School. And to my colleagues, thank you for your patience. We have one more special recognition. In establishing the Purple Star designation, the Virginia Department of Education recognized the challenges facing military-connected youth when they transfer to yet another school division, a primary challenge being finding new friends and making social connections. One of the key criteria for the award is that schools have a robust student ambassador program that welcomes students and connects them to their new school community. A small group from the Military Connected Youth Process Action Team worked with many of the schools recognized here tonight to establish and operationalize their student ambassador program, helping them meet their criteria. And for that work and many other significant contributions to the work of FCPS in support of our military-connected youth and families, we recognize three community partners from the team. I would like to invite School Liaison Officers Windy O'Sullivan, thank you for being here, Jamie Albers, and GMU literacy professor Dr. Jennifer Drake Patrick to come forward for a photo with the Board, and Ms. Baylor. Come on. Great picture, isn't this, folks? So ladies and gentlemen, as all of our wonderful team of supporters, you are all of our angels for our military-connected youth. As you take a seat, I'm going to pass the mic to Colonel Greenberg so he can offer a few remarks.
Thank you, Chairperson. I appreciate it so much. And I just really, truly, I'm the Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander. I truly appreciate all the principals and all the leadership, ma'am, from you to the Superintendent, Dr. Braybrand, and the rest of the leaders. This is truly an important momentous event, right? So our military children are challenged as they move and transition from school to school. This program really helps us establish a baseline and allows us to really set the schools up for success. So again, ma'am, thank you for your leadership. And Dr. Braybrand, sir, thank you for your leadership as well. And for the principals out there, thank you. It's great to see the purple out there. This is a great event, so thank you very much.
It's truly a partnership. Before I continue on, I do want to recognize two distinguished guests in the audience. I have Mr. Carl Frisch, School Board Member-Elect from the Providence District, and Ms. Elaine Tolan, School Board Member-Elect from the Drainsville District, so welcome this evening. I'm now going to hand the gavel over to Mr. Moon.
I call on Mrs. Corbett Sanders for a resolution.
Whereas Fort Hunt Elementary School proudly celebrated its 50th anniversary in the fall of 2019 for its service to our community since it opened its doors to the students in the fall of 1969, and whereas built on land once owned by George Washington, Fort Hunt Elementary School lies cradled in a bend of the Potomac River, surrounded by such renowned neighbors as Mount Vernon, Fort Hunt Park, River Farm, Dyke Marsh, and Huntly Meadows. This culturally rich community and history provides for great diversity and enrichment of the curriculum, and whereas Fort Hunt was forward-thinking in design and philosophy and was one of the first schools in Fairfax County to introduce the POD concept classrooms instead of the open design that promoted team teaching and was popular in the 60s, and whereas Fort Hunt Elementary is known for its Spanish-language partial immersion program in grades 1 through 6, which draws students from both inside and outside of the school boundaries, this enriching program gives students the opportunity to gain command of the Spanish language while being taught math, science, and health in Spanish, and whereas the mission of Fort Hunt Elementary School's staff and community is to empower students to become independent and collaborative problem solvers, empathetic and resilient learners, and respectful, community-oriented citizens of the world. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board honors Fort Hunt Elementary School on the occasion of its 50th anniversary, commends the school on its history of providing educational excellence and enrichment opportunities to its students and the community, and conveys its most heartfelt, best wishes for the continued success in the years to come.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McAlvin. Mrs. Corbett Sanders would like to speak on your resolution.
Yes, thank you. This is a really fun resolution to recognize because I remember when Fort Hunt Elementary School opened. I was in a neighboring elementary school, and it was a big deal because of, you know, not only when it first opened, it was the neighboring elementary school, but then when it introduced its Spanish immersion, you were at the cutting edge. And no matter what happens at Fort Hunt Elementary School, the one thing that is core to the success of Fort Hunt Elementary School is the wonderful community that it embraces. And the culture of community and welcoming and just a continued embracing of internationalization is something that I always walk into the building feeling like it's offering an all-day hug. And so it is wonderful to be able to recognize your 50th anniversary tonight, so thank you for being here.
Mr. McAlvin?
Nothing further.
Any other board members? If not, let's vote on this resolution. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table.
At this time, I would like to invite Principal Larry Jones, school staff, parents, and students who are in the audience, including Vice Principal Katie Plunkett, to join me at the dais for a photo with the Board. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, five citizens have signed up to address the Board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program budget and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who've come to speak to us tonight. Our first speaker is George Becerra.
Good evening, School Board members, Chairman Corbett, Karen Corbett Sanders. I'm going off a little topic. I know you have less than 10 folks signed up, so I can go to the back if you want, if you want to follow protocol, or I can continue. I'm not going to talk about caring culture. So is that all right? Okay. So sorry about that.
You still have three minutes.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I need two minutes. I wanted to talk today about your consideration for the board members who are coming back for the next term and the ones who are listening or here in the audience about the retreats, the School Board retreats. A little history on the School Board retreats for some of you folks. They've traditionally been held either at Mount Vernon or Gate House. They've never been recorded audio or video-wise. They've never been recorded audio or video-wise. I'm asking, and I don't know if that's going to change. The annual calendar was revised this morning, 11:12 this morning. It has two retreats coming up. School Board one is on January 16th, TBD, and February 3rd is a joint with the Board of Supervisors. Over the years, the last eight years, two turns for most of you folks. First one was the first one in January 2012 or February. And that's, if you remember, that Ms. McGawkin and I talked to you considerably about that one because of how it was treated on that one, from the clerk of the board staff at that meeting. It was at Mount Vernon, private entrance. You had to be guided by a security guard that called in. That is not open to the public. So that's traditionally what's been at Mount Vernon. Gatehouse, you also have to, on the weekend, buzz in. Most people aren't going to see a stop-gated parking area, and they're going to know to tap in. They're used to just coming in, or maybe through the front. So I'm asking, I know details have been worked out. I reached out to County Executive Hill, I'd say about an hour ago, and Chairman-elect McKay about 45 minutes ago. They both heard my concerns, and Mistress Hill said they are talking about what they're going to do on February 3rd. But the Board of Supervisors had a real retreat. They only had joints. The one in Financial Park, Ms. McGawkin, if you remember, that was the first one that Chairman Bulova set up. The second one was the joint board one at Mount Vernon, where the one Fairfax was voted on as both boards. The others have been for school board members, or for school ones at Mount Vernon and Gatehouse. If you're setting up these meetings, I understand January 16th and February 3rd might be too late to change this. But it is not open to the public, so from future ones out, please consider that. Another thing is, how much money does it cost to rent this place out? At the end of the day, it's just a room with some tables and food. But the difference is, it is an expensive piece of land there that those private folks hopefully are giving for free. I don't know. You could have that in a cafeteria here. And if you're concerned about the technology, you guys tape your form topics with basic technology. Use that same technology when you're doing the retreats. I'm not asking like Ms. Evans did $13,000 when she first wanted to tape everything, which was unheard of. And see where at? It's transparent, right? It works, people listen. They don't have to lose their job hours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yvonne Hefner, followed by Stephen Jones.
Hello. So my topic is the caring culture. So I'll lead off by talking about my son Ben, who has Down Syndrome. And he has seen a caring, inclusive culture in a couple of extracurricular activities. Dan Hale, head basketball coach at Marshall High School. Welcome Ben as manager of the varsity basketball team. Ben enjoyed his role supporting the team, but Ben was thrilled when Dan Hale and the basketball team went out one night to watch him play for his own basketball team in the regular, non-disabled Falls Shirt City Recreational League. The varsity team went wild when Ben shot five 3-pointers in one quarter to lead his rec team to victory. It was a magical time, and Dan Hale tweeted out Ben's amazing game success on the Marshall High School Tweet account. There's our basketball star over there. Wave Ben, there you go. His brother at the Naval Academy is playing basketball, and he's not getting five 3-pointers in one quarter. Unfortunately, much of Ben's in-school experiences in FCPS have not been very caring or inclusive. From my son's middle school years through the start of high school, the school staffs have tried to keep Ben out of the curriculum classes, even the learning-disabled self-contained curriculum classes. After much resistance at the beginning of middle school, the school staff finally allowed Ben to take three curriculum courses at the beginning of the seventh grade year. However, they made no effort to provide Ben any kind of accommodations, and were giving him Fs in each of these classes. Rather than look for ways to help Ben gain access to the curriculum in a least restrictive environment, they encouraged us to pull him out of these classes. I called the FCPS Special Education Curriculum Support Staff Ben, who visited the classes and recommended a number of accommodations due to Ben's disability of Down Syndrome, including shortened assignments and plain English. Ben did very well when provided these accommodations and was able to successfully access the curriculum. These accommodations were carried forward to his start at high school, and FCPS agreed that Ben should be placed on the standard diploma track and take a full high school program of curriculum courses. However, when Ben started the ninth grade at Marshall High School, he was only provided two curriculum classes. In 10th grade, he was only given one. In 11th grade, he was once again given two curriculum classes. In his senior year, following our due process, FCPS would not allow Ben to take even one curriculum class. Well into Ben's senior year, FCPS was required to allow Ben once again to take curriculum classes, as his IEP stipulated. But he lost the opportunity to take any curriculum classes for credit that entire year. He therefore only managed to take five curriculum courses in his four years of high school, though his IEP called for him to be on the standard diploma track. With only a handful of curriculum classes under his belt in four years of high school, and only three possible years of schooling left, getting his standard diploma would now be an uphill battle.
Thank you, Ms. Hefner.
Okay, so my time is up, and I'll go ahead and introduce my husband.
My topic is also the caring environment. The after-school best buddies program is another great example of a caring and inclusive program. However, we do not see caring in conclusion for our son Ben and his daily school experience. FCPS promised they'd move forward in good faith to provide Ben the pathway to a standard diploma following our appeal settlement. Instead, they're now retaliating against Ben and his parents in many ways, and Ben's experienced both failure and misery because of these actions. Ben is attending McLean instead of his homeschool because FCPS specifically directed that Ben go there. Whereas Ben took five curriculum courses and got all his A, Bs, and one C, McLean is giving Ben all Fs, with the exception of English, where he has Adidas past quarter. If they wanted to fail Ben, one of the most effective tools FCPS could use would be to deny him his accommodations from his last signed IEP that led to success in curriculum but classes both in middle and high school. The other tools that FCPS could use to drive Ben out of the least restrictive environment is harassment and bullying, to make him feel so miserable that he cries uncle. Here's just one example. Because FCPS would not agree to provide Ben the details on what he needs to work on his homework, Ben reached out to his classmates for help in clarifying assignment information, so he handed out a note to a couple classmates in each class to ask for contact information. One day, a teacher saw a copy of this note, and several staff members severely admonished and shamed Ben, including a principal. The DP Coordinator for FCPS is intimately involved with every detail of Ben's school situation and has attended every school IEP meeting since our due process case back in 2017. She told our attorney that FCPS required that Ben attend McLean because it has a good Category B program. She indicated this is where Ben belongs. However, we've worked hard for six years to keep Ben out of these Cat B, non-curricular classes. With the proper accommodations and a cooperative team of teachers and other school staff, six years of middle school and high school have been demonstrated that success in curricular classes is more than achievable for Ben. So we're asking for help in three areas. To allow Ben to move to his homeschool, provide Ben all of the accommodations from his last IEP, and get the due process machine to extract themselves from the intricate involvement of every aspect of Ben's schooling, and to remove their heavy hand from Ben's back, and instead just allow the teachers and staff to support Ben and work towards his success in a caring culture. Ben is a very respectful, hard-working, focused student who loves to learn. He desperately wants a fair chance to get a real education. To refuse to provide all these accommodations that FCPS deemed necessary prevents access to the curriculum. So does bullying. We want the FCPS to work hard towards Ben's success. It's not a caring culture now. It's in the best interest of everyone for FCPS to do the right thing, to promote inclusion and instill this caring culture.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Tina Williams, followed by Jane Miscavige.
Good evening and happy holidays. I'm Tina Williams, President of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers Union, which represents over 4,000 professional educators. Education has the power to transform the lives of our children. Our public schools help them navigate the world and offer comfort and safety in times of distress. Professional educators work to shape young minds, instill an appreciation of diversity and difference. For this to occur, it takes the collective effort of the entire school system to support this process and provide a safe, inclusive, and caring environment where every child will experience success. To foster student success, we urge the board to increase available resources to improve implementation of discipline policies, fix the sub shortage, and increase educator wages. This will help our young people to receive the education they deserve. Student behavior challenges have increased and lead to disruption in learning. FCPS discipline policies are implemented differently from school to school. Valuing equity for our students resembles providing ongoing resources and training for all staff with a focus on evidence-based positive school discipline, conflict resolution, cultural relevancy, behavior management, social justice, and equity. The board must increase funding for counselors, psychologists, social workers, who have the expertise to address the increasing demands in our student behavior. As you're aware, finding and retaining substitutes is extremely challenging. It is common for an educator to secure a sub only to have them cancel the morning of. The ripple effect is that IAs, office staff, school counselors, and other specialists are then, will then be covering for short and extended periods of time while handling their everyday work duties, which means they cannot fully attend to the needs of our children. We urge the board to select and train a group of well-paid, dedicated subs who understand the needs of our students and that our educators can depend on. In Virginia, educator wages are some of the least competitive in the country. As a result, many talented educators migrate to other counties where they earn more and the cost of living is less. While our FCPS has increased wages the last two years to attract and retain premier talent in Fairfax for our students, we must continue to focus on livable wages in this county for all employees. We look forward to working with the board to tackle these critical issues. Thank you.
Jane Miscavige.
Good evening. I'm Jane Miscavige, President of the Fairfax County Council PTA, representing 170 PTAs and 40,000 PTA members. I was recently informed that as the leading voice for parents and families, it's customary for the PTA to thank the school board for your four-year term of service. I've had a lot of opportunities with PTA, and this was, I think, the most intimidating. This one kept me up at night because I can't possibly imagine how to describe the scores of accomplishments and achievements you've made for our children, and our families, and our teachers, and our community. Your accomplishments will live on for decades to come. I even had a friend help me start a list of everything we could remember that you've done, but honestly, I just can't do it justice. I can't do you justice. So I will say this from the heart. The PTA motto is "Every Child, One Voice." Our mission is to make every child's potential a reality, and we do that by advocating, by speaking up on behalf of our kids and our teachers and our families. And on behalf of 170 PTAs and 40,000 members, I have to tell you, this school board over the past four years has been an incredible partner for our advocacy. You promptly respond to emails and phone calls. You attend our PTA meetings to keep our parents informed. You hold regular briefings for your PTA presidents in your districts, which helps encourage their further community leadership and helps you listen in on what concerns our families and our schools. You've participated in our trainings, our advocacy nights, and our family engagement conferences. So thank you, you've been extraordinary, and it's really been our pleasure to work with you. As volunteers who want to help the schools, it's really easy to get excited, to jump in with both feet, and to quickly become overwhelmed and stretched too thin. And as volunteers, we get to step back every now and then and rebalance our lives. But as school board members, you asked for, you worked for, and you won positions that for just a little bit of part-time compensation, you have jobs that are full-time and a half. We realize you've made many, many sacrifices. You've wanted to be here, but you've made sacrifices, as have your families and your friends and your support groups. So again, on behalf of our PTA members, thank you, thank you, and thank you. This is an unorthodox request, but Chair, may I approach the dais? I have certificates of appreciation for each of our school board members.
Please do, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. And any board members in the room, if you'd like to join me? Maybe we could get a picture?
Let's go ahead, and if we can hand a phone to someone to take a picture, that would be great. Excellent, perfect, thank you. I know that that is not our traditional approach, but we have a special relationship with the strong partnership with our PTAs and PTOs, and it is what makes FCPS so strong, is that partnership with our parent organizations, our families, and our staff. I see that we have another distinguished guest in the audience who would like to recognize Ms. Stella Pikarski, our school board member-elect from the Sully District. Welcome tonight. I now call on Ms. Boateng for Student Representative Matters.
Good evening, everybody. I hope that everyone had a good and restful Thanksgiving break because I feel as if regardless of whatever happened, everyone deserved it. And I don't really have too much to say today, so I'm just going to recap what I've done since the last meeting and say what I'll be doing in the future. Since the last meeting, yesterday, I actually spoke at Hayfield National Honor Society induction ceremony. And I've -- that was really cool for me because it gave me a chance to also be in the midst of a bunch of wonderful students. And today, I met with my school psychologist. And I -- that is something that I feel as if every student should take advantage of and do. I wanted to meet with her and kind of introduce myself and also hear about her line of work and what -- a bunch of things I did not know because I personally did not know exactly what a school psychologist does because I haven't been exposed to them. And so I really encourage other students to take the initiative and reach out to their school psychologists and kind of get to know them and see what they can, like, basically gain from them, also like encourage them to reach out for resources because thankfully, the Fairfax County has a bunch of resources for students, but it's one of those things that we have to look for them. So I encourage students to do that. And I'm honestly a broken record at this point because I always talk about the same thing. I like to talk about student advocacy and making sure that students feel as if their voices are being heard and that they have a voice. So, and hopefully, in the near future, I -- there are forum topics that I want to be able to talk to the Board. And I had the one that's most pressing to me is the Student Town Hall one. And it's a little one, if you're unaware, where I want to see if I can have some sort of form of a council of students, like, kind of based on their homeroom. And one person from each homeroom comes to represent their homeroom in a council sort of thing and gives them more access to basically speaking to administrators about things that are going on at their school. In the future, I will be talking -- meeting with staff about restorative justice, just kind of to enlighten myself about it because my main focus, as I've been saying this year, has been discipline reform and equity. So just to make sure that I'm, in the future, going forward, I am as knowledgeable as I can. I want to be able to meet with them, and I'll be having three meetings next week. So I'm looking forward to that and kind of to figure out how to move forward in student achievement by making sure that every student feels seen and cared about and nurtured in our school system. And next week, which is often my favorite part, is when I get to attend SAC meetings because I'm a part -- I get to see so many different students and so much great leadership because it's always wonderful to also see students doing great things because sometimes it gets a little daunting because I know, like, I try to fix everything, but in one year and just me, it's not going to happen. So looking around and seeing that there are students out there changing the world essentially is wonderful for me. And to end off, I just wanted to say one thing that I said in my speech yesterday at Hayfield that I feel as if it could be -- everyone can learn from. And I've said that everyone -- a lot of people, being a leader is very difficult, and we all want to change the world. And I feel as if that's very daunting sometimes, and we sometimes it's okay to step back. And basically, what I want to say is, if we all strive to change one person's world in a way, we will all be changing the world. So I just hope that everyone makes it a part of themselves to every day go out and trying to change someone's world. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. I now call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction of the mid-year budget review.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. We're going to do our mid-year budget review, and we have the distinguished -- my high honor and great privilege to introduce to you the Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, Ms. Lee Burden. Ms. Burden?
Good evening. Chairman Corbett Sanders, members of the School Board, and Dr. Braybrand. The mid-year review offers an opportunity to revise the fiscal '20 budget based on current year trends and any new requirements that have become known or requested since the year-end budget review that was in late July. It's organized with descriptions of the recommended changes, followed by updated fund statements. Remember that we do have a work session on Monday, December 9th, and one of the topics scheduled for that work session is the mid-year review slated from 12:30 to 2:00 p.m. And all of the data is at the end, as of the end of October. On page one, School Operating Fund Revenue, there are two changes. A sales tax increase of 1.2 million plus expenditure increases of .5 million for increased utility costs for a net change of $727,000. The sales tax increase is due to a fiscal '19 late adjustment by the state. The other primary changes are for the grants that reside in the operating fund, IDEA. Section 611 decreased 23,151, and Section 619, which is preschool, increased by a similar amount at 22,219 for a net change of $932. All the revenue adjustments include a corresponding expenditure adjustment. So on page two are the recommended School Operating Fund expenditure changes. Revenue, again, is going up a net of 726, and the recommended expenditures are at 726, leaving no additional funds available for allocation to the beginning balance or other initiatives. Funding is recommended for middle school security cameras at eight middle schools: Glasgow, Herndon, Irving, Lanier, Poe, South County, Holmes, and Twain. The grant expenditure changes are recognition of the offsetting IDEA awards. And one other item is funding from the already budgeted School Board Flexibility Reserve in the amount of 625 is recommended to be allocated towards School Board staffing support. This would provide approximately $50,000 for each member to seek staffing and support for assistance with legislative matters, websites, newsletters, analysis, constituent communications, et cetera. So, again, the total expenditure adjustments are $726,000. The School Operating Summary on page three shows just what I told you in detail. There is also a beginning balance summary. We ended up with 24.4 million from the fiscal '19 budget to fund the beginning balance in the fiscal '21 budget, and that's less than 1% of the total operating budget. Moving to page four is the School Construction Fund. Changes in expenditure adjustments are for projects that after the year-end resulted in a net increase in expenditures and a corresponding decrease to the beginning balance of $95,000, and that was primarily an underaccrual in the non-bond portion for building maintenance. Additionally, there's a safety issue with the Centerville turf, and so 200,000 has been allocated from the turf reserve to address that issue. And then, of course, authorized bonds were increased by 155 million from the fiscal '19 bond referendum. As far as food and nutrition services, also on page four, the changes due to adjustments reported after year-end result in an increase to the reserve of approximately $50,000. Additional revenue is expected, offset by expenditure increases because there, again, was an underaccrual on the expenditure side. The ACE Fund on page four has a net budget increase of 95,000 due to an increase in the Adult, Ed, and Family Literacy Grant, which was awarded on August 16, 2019, after we'd finished year-end. Grants and self-supporting programs are also on page four. There's a slight change to the beginning balance due to adjustments reported after year-end of 28,000, and the $9 million increase in grants overall is due to new awards, offset by a couple of decreases or adjustments to current year awards. And you can find details about the grant fund adjustments on the very next page, on page five. As far as the School Insurance Fund, which is basically workers' compensation and risk management, in this fund, there's a .1 million change due to year-end adjustments that weren't known at the final budget review, and those funds increase the allocated reserves for that fund. Health and Flexible Benefits has an increase of 2.5 million to the fiscal '20 beginning due to adjustments reported after year-end. We've also updated our estimates for revenue and are projecting a net increase of .1 million, and that's due to decreases in contribution, shifts in participation, flex fund revenue decreases, offset by pharmacy rebates and interest income, so that it ends up being .1 increase in revenue. Expenditures have also been recalculated based on more current trends and reflect a net decrease of 16.1 million. And that's due to higher projected claims, higher admin costs, offset by flex fund, and those changes result overall in a reduction to the premium stabilization reserve of 13.5 million. The total fund is 435 million, and so 72.8 million is the premium stabilization reserve. That's nearly 17%. Best practices say that that fund should have a range of 16% to 20%, so we're certainly within the range of what would be considered standard for that. Page six is the ERFC Fund. The beginning balance reflects an increase of 34.4 million to the fiscal '20 beginning balance due to adjustments reported after year-end. Investment income is up 35 million, offset by about .6 million in investment expenditures, so that's how you get the net 34.4. And even though that seems like a large swing at this year, it's due to timing since the final portfolio values are not available until after year-end. We see that every year when we do the mid-year review. Other adjustments net to 24.7 million, so that the fund's ending balance shows an increase. Page six is the OPEB Trust Fund as well, and the beginning balance for that fund reflects an increase of 6.1 million, again, due to a year-end adjustment of revenue reported after the year-end review. So this adjustment captures the June 2019 investment results, which increase that income. The rest of the document is the fund statements, which I'm not going to go over because I basically just went over them with all of the detail in the narrative piece. Again, we do have a work session on Monday where we can discuss all of this in great detail, but if you have any questions now, I'd be glad to.
Thank you so much, Ms. Burden. I do have a couple of Board members that have some questions, and so I will start with Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I'm looking forward to having a little more discussion on this on Monday, but for tonight, for the purpose of clarification, just a couple of points. The $625,000 for School Board Staffing Support, that is for the six-month period. That's the second half of fiscal year '20.
That is correct.
Correct.
January 1 to June 30.
And that's on top of what the School Board members are already being supported by existing staff. There will be no change to the existing staff in the School Board office to support School Board members.
That is correct.
Just wanted to make that clear.
This is additional supplemental funds for staff support.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. Since I may not be at the Monday work session because of my day job teaching, probably won't make it. So I have just a few questions. Sorry. On that same page, page two, and actually the same issue, the $625,000 for School Board staffing, I think I do need a little clarity about where that's coming from and what it is. So I think I understand that what Mr. Moon just asked is, this is -- well, first of all, before I ask the question of what it is, what is the School Board Flexibility Reserve? Can you explain that for the community?
Sure. The Flexibility Reserve is normally maintained at 8 million to meet any unforeseen or unanticipated needs each year. The unused portion of the reserve is carried forward to the next year, every year, and if any has been used, then that is brought back up to the level of 8 million dollars. For fiscal '20, at this point, nothing has been spent out of those funds, and the 625,000 would come from that funding source. So you notice on that page of the mid-year review that it doesn't change the 726,000 that we're seeing as the total expenditure adjustments because it's not an increase to the budget. It is merely a transfer from the Flexibility Reserve for School Board support.
Gotcha. So it's one-time funds for between now and the end of fiscal year 2020 then? Because at the end of fiscal year 2020, as you say, we're going to have to take that out of the operating budget and put it back in the School Board Reserve. Is that right?
That's correct. That, yeah, that's a pretty routine procedure that at the end of the year, we bring that back up to 8 million. You know, if nothing else were funded out of the Flexibility Reserve, then 7.4 million would automatically carry forward, and then we'd bring that back up 600,000 for the next year.
Sure. So it's just a way to find a bucket to take the money out of for now, right?
That's correct.
So because it's one-time money, how do you anticipate that expense continuing going forward? Because I think we're talking about positions, yes? And don't we usually fund those out of continuing money?
Well, we're not considering this to be FTEs at this point. This is just placeholder funding for staff support for a half a year. You know, there's a number of ways that it could be funded in the next year. The School Board could make an amendment to the budget, to the fiscal '21 budget at the advertised level, asking us to fund this. In previous years, and in fiscal '21 as well, we'll continue a staffing initiative, funding in the budget, which is an opportunity for the School Board to make some decisions, and it could be funded out of those funds, you know? And I guess you also could fund it out of the Flexibility Reserve in fiscal '21 if you desired to do so.
Okay. So let's say that the next School Board does decide to continue to fund because I think if they decide to spend that money and hire people, they're probably going to want to continue to make that, you know, continue to keep those people on, right? They're going to want to find that money. So what that would mean for a 12-month period then would be twice as much?
That's correct.
Okay. So they would have to find?
1.2 million.
Yeah, 1.2 million in the fiscal '20, '21 budget and every budget going forward in order to continue to fund those positions, if that's what they decided to do.
That's correct.
So at 1.2 million, aren't you talking about 12 full-time equivalent positions as a possibility?
No, that is not my understanding. Again, this is just a placeholder. I think at this point, we're looking at a model similar to the Board of Supervisors in that these are funds that can be used for at-wheel employees so that you could perhaps hire two part-time, lower-level clerical employees if that was where your need lies. Or, you know, if you needed legislative help, then, you know, you might only be able to get one. But I don't think at this point, we're envisioning FTEs because, again, at-wheel employees is kind of a different animal.
Sure. So it's just a budget for every Board member?
That's correct.
That's the idea? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you for this report. I appreciate it very much. I did want to highlight the middle school security cameras. I know this is the middle school principal's top priority this year, so I appreciate you including the funding for this to at least get us started at the eight designated middle schools. When -- and I do think that this is an appropriate use because this is primarily -- this will be one-time funding primarily, correct?
That's correct.
And so can we multiply that by three to get the figure that it would take to put these security cameras into all of our middle schools eventually, if that's what we chose to do, essentially? Or is it not that easy?
No, it's not that simple. I mean, right now, we have four schools that are in the renovation queue. One is funded by a grant. One is fully completed. And then when we do this, that leaves 19. So after these eight are done, then that will leave 11 that still are to be funded.
I see.
But the eight that we did or that we're recommending, four of those already have exterior cameras, and so this is we're completing the projects at those schools. And so these costs of the four of these are a little bit lower than you normally see when you had to do, you know, full-blown exterior and interior.
I see.
So.
So there's a little.
Yeah, you can't just multiply it by three.
You can't just multiply. Okay, I understand. And ongoing costs, once -- this is for installing them, correct? And do we have a figure for what the ongoing annual cost will be once the cameras are installed?
That is a level of detail that I do not have with me. Mr. Plattenberg might want to answer it, or we can, you know, put that in the queue for Monday.
Perhaps if you don't have it off the top of your head, I'd appreciate getting an answer to that for the work session.
Okay.
And I also, I don't have an objection to increasing School Board office staff. I think some of us really haven't heard any details about that, or we've heard some details, and that's probably for the next Board, actually, to decide. So I believe what I heard you say in answer to Ms. Hines's question, that this is really, it's a placeholder, that we're putting it aside in case the next Board wants to add staff immediately. Is that the idea?
Well, I guess short of someone removing it from the mid-year agenda, when you take action after the action after the work session on Monday, it's action.
It would always be, sorry, I see Dr. Braybrand looks like you had something you wanted to say.
Ms. Evans, this is what I would say. This is a placeholder for the school board. There have been conversations, even in work sessions just this fall, about additional school board supports. Ultimately, it's the school board's decision about the shape and function of what those dollars are used for. Ms. Burden's outlined, it could be a variety of things, but honestly, in the end, staff is trying to take what we heard as conversations and create some space as we transition boards for additional supports. The PTA was here tonight talking about a part-time job funded at 23, $25,000 with full-time expectations from the community. So, we're trying to provide, listening to the conversations you've had, the opportunity you could choose to use less of it, more of it, but we needed to have, we believed we needed to have a chance in this transition between boards, the opportunity for additional supports for the board, and I think the ultimate determination will be made by the board moving forward.
All right. Thanks very much.
Mr. McAlveen?
Thank you. I first want to address the issue of the cameras. So, I appreciate that this is a priority of the middle school principals. It's, I think like we saw with the menstrual hydrine pilot, it's kind of, we're given a list of schools, and we don't have any sense of why we're giving those eight schools. I mean, I can guess, but there's no explicit information there. The first question I would have on the cameras is, a number of board members brought to staff earlier this year, that we had one high school that did not have cameras, McLean High School, and my understanding is that there was no central funding provided to them. Can you explain why we're now providing funding to these schools and not to McLean?
So, high schools, the setup we've had for high schools is, high schools have been able to use local dollars to expend on cameras over the last several years. One of the issues with middle schools is they don't have the same source of activity funds and local school funds in the same capacity to have those funds as high schools do. We do see, and we can provide, OSS, the Office of Safety and Security, Mr. Vaccararo did develop the list, looking at data, doing his review with his staff of what would be the appropriate next schools. Four of the, how many were there again? Eight? Four of the eight had outside cameras already, and it was just doing the remainder inside framework. So, that's the piece. But back on the funding mechanism, we feel needs to be different for middle schools because of the same capacity for them to be able to buy their own cameras. And I'll be honest with you, I inherited this opportunity for high school, or high schools are done, but to be honest, when I put the equity lens on about who got cameras when, when you're relying on local school dollars to do it, I think has created some of those inequitable situations that I feel this board has wanted to try to move away from. And I know Ms. Evans had asked too. I really want to aggressively, with additional one-time dollars, which is what these mid-year adjustments are, finish the remainder of the middle schools as quickly as I can, of course with your ultimate approval. I do believe it is something that we need to have for all of our middle schools to enhance safety and security.
My second question, thank you, Sat, on the cameras is, and certainly you were here then, back in 2012, it was a major deal when we started rolling out cameras to high schools, and you will recall that we put in a massive community engagement process that went through the region for each of these schools. So, my question is, are we doing any sort of community engagement on this, or we're just sticking them in schools?
We still have a process for community engagement that we've used with each of the schools that has, where we have installed cameras, and we anticipate we will do that as well if these new schools were approved.
Okay. So, it'll be the same process?
Yes.
Okay. I do want, as my colleagues have, to address the second issue of the school board staffing support. I think my first reaction to this is, what in the world? $50,000 per school board member for the first half-year, and as Pat Hines eloquently stated, it would be, if this were taken forward, $100,000 a year per school board member. My first question is, in seeing this, is why are we seeing this now? This seems to be stuck in a mid-year budget report without any sort of community engagement that goes with the annual budget process. I think if the community were seeing this, they would be shocked, given all the needs in our system, to be putting $625,000 for half a year for school board support. As I've stated in previous work sessions, we have an underutilized school board staff as it is, and it is incumbent upon the board and the school board staff to hire staff that has the skills that are needed to support the board. Throwing more money at this problem is not going to help. We have a lot of system needs. I think we talk ad nauseum, and we fight over pennies every year for the many priorities of this board, and this is certainly not one of my priorities, and if this remains in this budget review, I will be voting adamantly against it.
Thank you, Mr. McAlveen. Ms. Schultz?
Let's talk about middle school cameras some more. So, I am, and have been, and will continue to be, a vehement opposer of schools and our, cameras in our middle schools. When we first rolled out cameras in our high schools, one of the major issues we talked about, Dr. Braybrand at the time, was by putting cameras in our secondary schools, we were subjecting middle-school-aged children to being on camera, and whether or not the student discipline would be affected upon middle-school children the same way as it would high school. And we were assured absolutely not, that there was no intention of catching little middle-schoolers via cameras, and that should they be caught on something, that the cameras would not be used against them. And here we are, this is the ever-expanding creep of government and the violation of what I believe are civil liberties of children, minor children. We have a compelled in-school requirement unless you are in a different type of schooling or you have a waiver, you need to be in public school. And in the eight years that I've been on the board, not one report has ever been produced by this staff to the school system, to the public, to the board, publicly or in a closed session, about the efficacy of these in-school cameras. I'm not talking about perimeter cameras on the outside to prevent intrusion, vandalism, et cetera. We're talking about in the hallways, watching kids all day long. And what's the point? What is it? What have we avoided? What are the outcomes? What is the data? What is the meaningful data? What is the meaningful data in context of having put cameras in high schools? What were the crime statistics and the behavioral statistics before we put them in high schools? And what were they after? What has been achieved? You're talking about spending $800,000 by putting more cameras in schools to watch little kids. For what? To what end? There's literally nothing that has ever been produced for this board that shows why. It's just to make schools safe. What makes schools safer by having cameras in the hallways? And the reality is, is that one of the worst things a school board member will do is sit in that back room and have a discipline issue come up and have to go through not 50, not 100, but hundreds of pages of a child's discipline record. And the worst is when we're asked to watch, oh, here's a video, and there's no sound, and it's from one angle, and you're supposed to divine something extra about what happened in that video as if to, that somehow better informs you. And it doesn't. It prejudices you all the further because some kids get caught in some angles, and how do you interpret? And it's a terrible situation. And now, we're talking about doing it to little kids. And who gets caught more? You know, what are the statistics of who winds up behaviorally being caught in the discipline process? We know it's students with disabilities. And so, the thought that now we're going to lower the bar to catch little kids who predominantly, we already know, are over-punished by, as students with disabilities through our discipline process is repugnant. And the fact that we have not solved middle-school start times and that we would throw 3/4 of a million dollars at watching kids instead of serving kids, that has anything to do with student achievement, is a major problem. And I'm not going to be here to vote on this, but I'm telling you what, I'm the only person sitting here right now who's going to have a middle-schooler next year, and this makes me angry. I also have a middle-schooler who is a student with disabilities. It makes me more angry, and it makes me angry for everybody out there who has no idea that the government is going to spy on your kids using your taxpayer dollars and then discipline them because now we've got the goods on them, and then we're going to use it. It's a terrible idea, and the incoming board should reject it hot out of hand. The next thing I have a question on specifically is the Centerville quote-unquote "safety and health concerns related to the turf." Ms. Burden, could you go into that a little bit, please?
No, but Mr. Plattenberg might be able to, or we can take it as a question.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And the Centerville turf, as you recall, what we've talked about before, including what Ms. McLaughlin had done with the turf task force, one of the outstanding things that they had was, had not fully completed, and we're going to reconvene the group, was on having a replacement or refreshment cycle. Since that time, we've had annually, we do GMAX testing on all of our turf fields. As a part of that, we've gone ahead in concert with the replacement cycle, in concert with the GMAX testing for the safety for head injuries and field athletic participant injury remediation, working with Mr. Curran. We've developed a plan for the replacement of the turf fields. Centerville High School is one that has had the most recurring GMAX issues. So, that is why we've gone ahead and requested it so that we can accommodate-
Can you just, can you just, the GMAX issues-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize.
Can you just clarify what that means?
Yeah.
Because this is listed as a safety and health concern.
Yeah.
And again, as the only person sitting here who's had a child playing on that field-
Yes, ma'am.
-every single week for like the last five months, you know, I'd like to know-
Yeah, I apologize.
And I have questions that will come. When we say it's a safety and health concern-
Yeah.
-have we been exposing children to-
No, ma'am.
...a safety and health concern? Or maybe we could use different language if it's not actually-
Well, we could use different language, but the bottom line is, the GMAX testing is for a lot of the concussion. What it really comes down to is turf field has rubberized components that has to be fluffed up and kept up. Certain parts of the field get more wear and tear. So, what has to happen is those parts of the field have to be maintained on a periodic basis. If over time, because of the amount of use that we have on our turf fields, that rubberized component gets, go ahead and worn down, and then the turf, what we call carpet underneath it, gets worn down in those spots, we have to come out and do replacement. Our replacement and fluffing up that we have done, once we have the GMAX testing and the report by an independent contractor, we go ahead and accommodate what is in that report at the expense of us in terms of our maintenance of our turf fields. When we do that, they come back out and re-inspect. That's the reason why I use the term in replacement as a safety item. I do believe you are correct that would cause great alarm, and the fact, being a parent and having your child play there, I do appreciate those recommendations that we modify the language. But in the case of this one, it is to go ahead and get that entire field replaced because of the fact that it is our most, and I call it frequent flyer, of the wear down then into the carpet, then we have to come out, and the expense that we have to put back in to go ahead and bring it up.
Okay. The reason I say this is because when you do bring in a concussion, concussion protocol issues, and what that means for students returning to the classroom that we already have problems with, that if this is, and it sounds like it actually is, that ahead of the lacrosse season, I would say this is, this is a safety and health concern. I think we should look at things like the number of concussions that happened at Centerville versus other fields, and it should be an expedited effort to advance that before another playing season of a contact sport, which at least the boys' lacrosse certainly is ahead of the spring. So, I would say that that becomes an expedited priority issue. The last thing I will talk about is the, and I know we'll talk about this more on Monday, but the issue of $50,000 for a half a year for school board members to have at-will employees. We are the only elected officials who do not have at-will employees. Our staff is potentially underutilized depending upon who that person is because we have no ability to select our staff, and that is a pittance compared to the Board of Supervisors who have a half a million dollars to staff and serve the exact same constituency. And it is, it a failure of this board for not four years or eight years, but, you know, the 24 years that we've been elected to not keep to scale the ability to serve the public of, you know, now 1 point, almost 1.2 million, or 1.2 million people with, you know, people that don't necessarily have the skill sets for data analysis, for legislative interfacing, for constituency support, et cetera. You know, we don't have an office, we don't have any staff, we, you know, operate out of our cars and our kitchen table. So, this is not unreasonable. It is, has been talked about. I have a massive problem, however, about funding things out of the school board flexibility reserve, and I could rewind videotape from years past where the vehement opposition by this board to do anything out of the flexibility reserve because that is reserved for emergencies. Major legal costs have been emergencies, major snowstorm endeavors that have decimated line item accounts in the, in the school board budget. The notion that, well, we'll just dip into the flexibility reserve, all of a sudden becomes, you know, de rigueur, is a shocking, to me, a shocking development in terms of a mid-year budget review, but I guess we'll discuss that more on Monday.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. McLaughlin?
I do recognize that we have the work session, so I'm going to keep my remarks brief, but as this year's budget chair, I did want to just speak specifically to the comments and concerns that have been raised about the, basically the line item where we're just going to have money set aside earmarked for school board office staff. For my colleagues, and Mr. McAlveen in particular, I'm not sure if you were traveling when we had the prior work session discussion, but this board did talk about what we felt we could do to better position the next board with support for staff. As we talked about at that prior session, every elected official who represents the Commonwealth of Virginia, from our U.S. senators to our U.S. congressmen, to our state senators, to our state delegates, to, yes, our Board of Supervisors, every single one of them has funding to at least have one at-will employee who can work for them and provide constituent services, research, and data analysis, all of those things. The set-aside funding is not that we're going to automatically dole out like candy to school board members $100,000 and say, do what you want to do. I do appreciate my colleagues, and Ms. Schultz especially, how you were noting, the Board of Supervisors who represent the magisterial districts, the nine magisterial districts, they serve the same constituency we do. They have funding to have up to five full-time staff members. We're talking about one, and we're not talking about paying them $100,000 a year. Both Mr. Moon is my vice-chair of the budget. We simply worked with staff to say, what's the number we can set aside, and then work with the new board to determine what's reasonable and appropriate. And it might be that everyone decides, we'll start out with a part-time employee, see how that works, build up to it. But what I do want to see is that this outgoing board, one of the most seasoned boards we've had in a long time and will for a long time, respect this office, respect the fact that we're asking- Respect the fact that we're asking for one position while the board supervisors, who we believe we're doing equally important work, have funding for up to five. I just ask everybody to keep that in mind. We really appreciate, Ms. Burden, you and your team went to get information about how the board supervisors handle their at-will hires, how it works with benefits, and we certainly will have more than information, but to my colleagues, I would just say, this is just a placeholder. I hope you'll respect the importance of this placeholder. And then, yes, the incoming board of 12, we will have some important discussion of how best to spend this money. And finally, I'll leave it with this. I have the deepest respect for everyone sitting at this table, the hard work and dedication that people put in, and most of the public doesn't realize how much we do on our own shoulders. And we do it with love, care, and deep devotion for this school system. But please, let's think about the reality of how we position this board to do better work, and part of it's going to require getting some staffing support that we get to choose to help us best do our work. The voters never question the board supervisors for hiring five people to serve their districts, or they might vote them out in case they don't like it. The voters will have the same opportunity with everyone from the U.S. senator down to this school board, but please don't take that autonomy and important decision-making and discretion away.
Ms. Palchek.
Thank you. Briefly, happy to follow Ms. McLaughlin on this. I, I guess we have a work session, so hopefully on Monday we can discuss a little bit more. I know as I'm looking to hire staff for my next office, would like to know of that set aside, how benefits are incorporated and salary, et cetera. My understanding is we also need to possibly have space, right? If we're going to have support for, for school board, we do not currently have our own offices. And so, I don't know if there'll be more information or if that's being just left to the next board to consider, but I don't know if there'll be more information Monday on how the number was decided for the 50,000 per board member. And then regarding the other question on the security cameras, and I just want to take this opportunity to ask, because I believe I asked, I don't know if I've heard back, I think we're due for, or this board is due for a new review on our safety and security plan, where we are with what's been funded and why that was funded so far, obviously for the next board at this point. And then, you know, what are the recommendations from our security team as to what are the next investments? Because I think it's important that we have, and the board and the public have some answers as to why certain things are chosen. I know I have community members asking about the vestibules in schools, asking about, you know, additional support in elementary schools and staffing across the board. So, more holistically, I support what's there, but hopefully there can be time set aside for that review. So I don't know if you have anything on either of those at this point?
I'd say 15 seconds. Cameras were in our original security review after Parkland. This is a much more scaled-down version. Remember, the cameras were millions and millions of dollars. This is 700,000 for eight middle schools. So trying to be very judicious with dollars. We can do an update, a review of where we are now around safety and security, be glad to do that. And vestibules is something, and Mr. Plattenberg's more of an expert, what I'll say, they're certainly of high interest to us, but the design to be able to do that varies from school to school based on the year that building was built and whether a vestibule's an easy fix to put in or a much, much more expensive fix. So that's part of trying to figure out how we get the biggest bang for the buck for our dollars for security.
Are we currently reviewing those?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Plattenberg about vestibules, how many we've reviewed, have we been able to put any in? I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head, Mr. Plattenberg.
You know, basically, we've been doing it as part of the renovation program. There was discussion about this, there were a large number of schools that still do not have vestibules. But we certainly could provide an update on that and all of our security initiatives, the ones that the board had approved, and also the outstanding ones that we talked about.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. That would be helpful, because as you know, we've had this conversation when we, we're talking about equity. I know there are some schools who've discussed, right, being able to implement those and put them in themselves, and don't want the board to go down this, this route of those who can start to do that and those who can't are waiting for the renovations. So hopefully that's something that can come forward, a review of that, the need and the ability to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Ms. Keys-Gamaro.
I just want to support Ms. McLaughlin's statement with respect to support for this board and the upcoming board. We've talked about this a number of times in our work sessions, and I, you know, I've also talked about this with people who are currently on the board of supervisors, and they have come to me and said, "We support this. We understand how important this is." So, just having come through this season of elections and understanding, I think, a greater gamut of what the community expects in terms of our serving them, I would say this is very, very needed. And I, and I do think that the community understands what it takes to, at least this portion of what it takes to be able to say, serve our community adequately. So I hope that we will have very frank and respectful discussions regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamaro. I have a couple of go-bags, starting with Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And with all due respect, I was at the meeting where the topic of school board staffing was discussed. And I'll just say, as part of the next steps, I heard absolutely nothing, nor did I seek consensus for putting a dollar amount of $625,000 in a mid-year budget review with absolutely zero public engagement. I will just leave my colleagues with this, that, and I think our teachers and our staff would agree with this, respect doesn't start with how many staff members you have, it starts with how much you were paid. And I do believe this board needs to be paid based on how much of the county budget we oversee, which, by the way, as my colleagues know, is more than the supervisors. So I think we should be paid at that level. So please feel free to quote me in saying that we need to be paid more than the supervisors. However, at this time, again, I do not support more staff.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'll agree with Mr. McElveen that this board member should be paid more, but I'm, I'm going to disagree about the, the staffing idea. I did not, I just, I was just asking questions. I did not want to give the impression that I oppose this idea to actually add some staffing for school board members. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a long time coming, and I want to thank Dr. Braybrand for proactively putting it in this mid-year budget review so we can talk about it, and to you as well. But I, I just think, you know, this is support that we need. We have great executive administrative support in the school board office. It's wonderful. It's really the best. But it's not enough. As we know, our colleagues on the board of supervisors, they have administrative assistant support and for other employees who help them out. And the gaps, you know, I've just noticed them continuously over the last eight years and just recently in the Joint Environmental Task Force. And that's a joint task force between supervisors and school board members, and Ms. Palchek is on there with me, and we just had a meeting the other night. And, you know, we have had to beg and borrow support from the school board office for a little while, but that had to go away because there wasn't enough there. And now we're begging and borrowing time from Mr. Plattenberg's office for staff support for a task force that now has 15 people and will have subcommittees and regular meetings and will be making recommendations to both boards. This is important work, and if we want it to happen, we need to support it with staff. Now, Mr. Stork, supervisor, brings one of his hired staff members, right? And she supports us, and we don't have that. Neither Ms. Palchek nor I have that to bring to this really important work. So that, if I were staying on the board, that's how I would spend the money. And so, I am also a little worried about the precedent of taking money out of the school board emergency reserve, but I, if it's short-term and it goes back in, I guess, you know, it is what it is. You have to find it somewhere. On, as far as cameras, I would just say, you know, I remember eight years ago when I was first on the board and we were talking about security cameras, and the concern was, at least my concern, which I heard from the community and agreed with, was that, well, then in discipline cases, we will have these videos or still shots, and they will prejudice, you know, what, what we do as school board members when we're considering a discipline case. And what I have found, actually in experience over the last eight years, is that we don't get a lot of that kind of evidence. And when we do, we look at it and we say, "Well, that's grainy. That's not great. I don't know who that kid is." So I actually don't take it very seriously. So you have that judgment of school board members, you know, looking at the record of a case, and, you know, I, for one, just, I don't find it very compelling. So I have not found that to be the problem that people thought it would be, that somehow the cameras would be a gotcha in discipline cases. I don't think that happens. And also, I just think that, that the tone and the mood of the community and maybe the nation has changed somewhat in the last eight years, where we're at the point where I think people expect there to be security cameras almost everywhere. And even though it might not be necessary, but for that one day, that one terrible day when, you know, someone in the office sees an intruder on a camera, and you hope that day never comes, it's just one of those things that parents, I think, and community members and maybe our employees as well, just expect, they expect that to be part of our security system right now. And I haven't done a poll, so I'm just, that's just my sense, and so I think that some community engagement would be good. But I, I think that we have an equity issue with some middle schools having the cameras and some not, must be addressed, and so I appreciate that this is also in the mid-year budget review.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Schultz?
Yeah, actually, that's a great point, is that we don't get them very often, and when we do, they're not that helpful, which is exactly the reason not to have any more of them. What we should do is look at the best practices in other jurisdictions, in other states, where there is a much more difficult barrier to get onto a school campus in the first place, that you have to pass through, you know, a checkpoint to even get on the campus in the first point. You know, stopping somebody once you have a camera inside the school, that doesn't improve school security. And almost always, somebody who has broached a school is somebody, 70% of the time, somebody associated with school, so they already know anyway. So the whole goal is to move the perimeter of safety and security outside the school, not to tape it so that later you can use it, and, "Oh, by the way, you don't use it very much and it's not that effective." So that's actually the entire point for, against continuing to expand safety and security with cameras inside middle schools. Terrible idea. I just want to clarify on the positions, the 500,000, the half million that is given to each supervisor, everybody said five positions, not necessarily. They can hire, again, it's at-will, they can hire whomever, they could hire 10 if they wanted to at, at half that. And there are supervisors who've had more than five staff because they've chosen how to best support their constituency with, you know, whether it's job share, halftime, you know, somebody who's more expensive as a, as a chief of staff, someone who's, you know, has particular skill sets that are more discreet to their particular constituency, and that's the entire point. And I do agree that, again, there has been a failure over the last 24 years by state law, the school board, and this school board in particular, not all school boards in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but this school board under a county executive form of government, which is how we're referred to in state law, can be paid exactly the same as the board of supervisors. It is a board, school board, over many, many, many terms and many years that has failed to keep that up. And I am no fan of big government. I'm no fan of just growing to grow. But you have a dissonance between 1.2 million people and the high demands for, you know, the 10th largest school system in the United States, and no at-will staff and everybody operating out of their cars and their kitchen table. It's a complete total failure to be appropriately responsive to our constituencies and to meet the needs of, you know, a very demanding school system and a much larger, Mr. McElveen's right, a much larger budget than the board of supervisors. So what that figure is, I don't know, but what I do know is that we, we have a major disconnect as, as elected officials with the size of our operating budget, the size of our capital budget, and, and the needs of the people that we really, you know, we need to invest in being able to serve them well. And frankly, I think we'd save a lot of money. I think potentially we'd do a lot of financial, reputational, legal risk mitigation if we were more responsive, we could help get ahead of things, and, and were able to better serve our constituencies. And I look forward to a robust conversation on Monday.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I see that, Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. Yes, we will have an opportunity on Monday to discuss more of this. I'm not going to comment on school board staff one way or another. I've never supported a lot more, I've not needed it, but we have a large turnover in the school board, and I respect their need to be able to get up to speed. And I also respect the comments that the community does expect much more, and it has over time. So I will not comment on the need for staff, or not the need for staff, but I will remind my colleagues that this is one-time money, and the next board will get to discuss exactly their needs, and they're going to need help. But that if there is the decision to come up with a formula, it needs to come out of reoccurring money. The staffing, this $8 million flexibility reserve, in my previous life on the board, we created many years ago in the early 90s when there was actually a deficit that had to be closed. And in the past, we've used, and I believe it has mentioned, we've used this reserve for extreme emergencies, extreme weather events, where we've used up all of our plowing accounts. One year, we had tremendous number of increase in students late in the year and very large legal bills, et cetera. So that is normally its purpose. I understand why it's been put here as a placeholder, I respect that. But just, you will have to figure out how you're going to use it, and it needs to come out of reoccurring funds. With regard to the discussion of the cameras, I would like to know, perhaps by Monday, I know the middle school principals very much want the cameras, and I believe that was the one request that they have made, and I would like to know if we could have a little more information. Certainly, safety is, is, is a great concern for our community. We're a different time and a different place, and certainly, I would presume this is not a gotcha situation, but I would appreciate a little more information from the, the middle school principals so that we can kind of put this one to rest.
We can have representatives, Mr. Vaccarello and representatives from MSPA to be at the work session. We'll, we'll work on doing that with Mr. Smith and Mr. Plattenberg.
I think that would help the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I do want to thank you, Ms. Burden, for your very thoughtful presentation of our mid-year budget review. I also want to thank both you and Dr. Braybrand for bringing both of these budget requests to the, to the board. The, it's my understanding with the middle school cameras, that these are the remaining middle schools, and that some of the middle schools already have cameras or are in the process of getting cameras based on grant funding, because I know I have a school in my district that is receiving the cameras through a grant that they applied for, and that prior to the implementation of the cameras, there is an extensive process in which the community is engaged, there's a discussion as to where the cameras go in a building. The cameras do not go into private spaces such as bathrooms, locker rooms, nor do they go into classrooms where instruction is ongoing. It is really in the hallways and more the public spaces, and it acts as a deterrent in some cases. So I look for, forward to a more robust discussion about that on Monday. The other piece, I do want to talk about the staffing to support school board members. We have a, you know, our school board members, each of our magisterial districts, represent constituencies of as much as 100,000 people in each magisterial district, actually a little over 100,000, 110, yeah, and up. And there is an expectation by our community that their public servants- And there is an expectation by our community that their public servants are responsive to the needs of their community. And as part-time board members, many of us actually work full-time, and we have the flexibility to work full-time. But there is, not everybody can work full-time on behalf of the board because they have full-time jobs elsewhere. And so having the opportunity to better serve our constituents in ensuring that we meet the needs of each and every child that attends our schools, that we meet the needs of the staff members who require support from school board members, and the analytical work that school board members are expected to perform to be able to do their job in the thoughtful, caring manner which public servants, that we all are, pride ourselves in being able to do, means that we need to have the resources to do it effectively. And so I look forward to a discussion on Monday about how we can ensure that we honor the expectations of the broader community in how we can best serve them. And so I look forward to a conversation on Monday. Now, with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Burden, we appreciate all you do. And Dr. Braybrand, I call on you for the introduction of the strategic plan Goal Three Premier Workforce presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. We're here to do Goal Three, that's around premier workforce, and you know how important it is for us to get exceptional employees to be in our system. Our people are the difference, and we have Dr. Helen Nixon, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, who'll take you through the strategic focus report for Goal Three. Just a reminder, we will have a work session on this, and we look forward to sharing the presentation and then taking questions at the work session. Without further ado, it is my great privilege to introduce to you Dr. Helen Nixon.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. Dr. Braybrand, thank you very much for the introduction. Yes, my name is Helen Nixon. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for the Department of Human Resources, and tonight it is my pleasure to bring you once again the premier workforce Goal Three report. A few things before we begin. I would like to thank the extended team that helped to create this report. Thank you to Mr. Marty Smith, Michael Drager, Dee Holly Brown, Catherine Carroll, and Sean McDonald of our human resources team. And additionally, I would like to thank Leedy Hruda and the team in ORSE who helped to pull this together. And yes, our work session will be on December the 16th in the evening, so we will have an opportunity to engage in further discussion at that time. Our two focus areas in premier workforce remain exceptional employees and market competitive I know in previous goal reporting, the school board has reviewed these terms, but I would like to take a moment to go over these terms on the slide for our audience at home. As a review, the majority of the metrics use three-year baseline data to develop the targets. This is the average performance from school years 2014-15 to 2016-17. One- and two-year baseline is the performance only used when three-year baseline was not available. There is greater stability in utilizing three-year average data. The data represented in this report was collected for the years 2018-19. The targets are what the division should achieve by school year 2020, and the aspirations are what the division wants to achieve in the strategic plan. You'll see a change in the color coding in this report based on board input from previous presentations. The colors denoted on this slide and throughout the report remain the same and match the coding in other goal reports presented to the school board earlier this year. School year 17-18 data is available in Appendix A of the narrative report. And it is important to keep in mind that the return on investment data in this report relies upon actions that were mostly undertaken before the school board approved the metrics in March of 2019, and therefore were not intentionally implemented to support progress in this plan. Exceptional employees. FCPS will recruit, hire, and retain exceptional employees. We will go through each of these aspiration areas in our upcoming slides. On this slide, you will see the list of our aspiration statements, followed by a color-coded box indicating our overall status in that reporting area. We begin with recruitment. Every open teaching position will have at least five highly qualified applicants. We did not make progress during this reporting period. Before we review this slide, I first want to define what we mean by qualified. Applicants are deemed qualified if they meet the VDOE eligibility criteria for a teaching license. The following factors are considered. The individual must hold a minimum bachelor's degree. The individual must have completed VDOE-approved teacher preparation program, including student teaching, or hold an active, valid teaching license from another state with no deficiencies, with comparable endorsements to those offered in Virginia. They must also meet subject area endorsements required for the teaching position. Our baseline data indicates that we had a 3.4 highly qualified applicants for each position. There has been a .7 decline, approximately 20%, in qualified applicants from our baseline. In 1819, we had a 2.7 applicants for every open position. The decrease from 17-18 is .4 points. To reach our aspirational value of five qualified applicants for each open position, we need an additional 2.3 applicants per open position. Some of the challenges remain the decrease in teacher enrollment in teacher prep programs across the state of Virginia, which has been as much as 45% in the last year. The diversity of qualified teacher applicants will be equal to the diversity of Fairfax County residents. We have progressed slightly in this target. A few things of note on this slide. The dotted line represents our incremental progress towards the 2020 goal, and the red line represents our aspirational value area. On this slide, I will begin with our Asian subgroup identified on the first box at the top of each bar. Fairfax County is 16% Asian. Our baseline performance for Asian candidates was 7% of our qualified applicant pool. We remain consistent in 1819 at 7%. The blue section of the graph represents our Hispanic qualified applicants. Fairfax County is 19% Hispanic. Here, we have slightly improved our performance, moving from 6% in the baseline to 7% this last school year. Fairfax County is 9% black. We have slightly improved our performance by 1%, moving from 12% to 13% of the applicant pool. In this instance, we are outperforming our resident percentage, however, our goal is to increase all the diversity in our pool. Our team continues to work very hard on recruiting for the division, and we will address some of those strategies shortly, and these efforts, we hope, have a more profound impact on the diversity of our workforce. And at our work session on the 16th, we will provide data to the school board to demonstrate also our progress in our J1 visas for the hiring of international teachers as well. We have continued to expand our recruitment networking internally and externally. Some of our highlights include our Back to Fairfax events, our job fairs, job fairs on a virtual platform, increased marketing strategies, FCPS ambassador programs, asking our administrators and administrative team members from our schools to come with us on recruiting trips, especially for those schools where they perhaps attended themselves, where they can serve as alum ambassadors, college site visits, and of course, our work with our higher ed partners, and our collaboration with various K-12 associations. And at our work session, our talent acquisition management team will be available to share with the board an extensive list of all the schools we have visited and some of the new marketing strategies we have engaged in. Our TAM team has specific targeted recruitment strategies for our workforce diversity. Our Teachers for Tomorrow program, our participating, excuse me, our participating schools include Centerville, Chantilly, Edison, Falls Church, Lake Braddock, and Mount Vernon. This year, we were able to add Herndon and South Lakes. Additionally, I would like to share that two middle schools have implemented educator rising programs, Lanier and Lake Braddock. Currently, we have 221 students enrolled in our Teachers for Tomorrow program. We have also cultivated relationships with our local partnerships with the NAACP Youth Council, the Latino Chamber of Commerce, Korean-American Education Association, and the Fairfax Association of Black School Educators. We have also increased our presence at historically black colleges and universities and other minority-serving institutions. This year, we have also instituted a new recruiting strategy with the NFL Players Association, recruiting retired NFL players in various coaching positions and possible teaching positions. That's an ongoing endeavor. In terms of engaging our military partners, we're very happy to share that we were able to partner with Troops for Teachers in Hiring Our Heroes events. We've also expanded our advertising and connections to include agencies such as American Women Veterans, Army Career Alumni Programs, Marine for Life, Operation Home Front, and Veterans Employment Training Services, just to name a few. While we solicit volunteer ambassadors to recruit, our TAM office has two full-time recruiters. And while too soon to tell, we are hopeful our continued investment in T4T will yield greater diversity in our recruitment and ultimately in our hiring. FCPS invested approximately $17 in job fair recruiting costs for each of the 5,566 qualified applicants who applied for teaching positions with FCPS. Participation in the Teachers for Tomorrow program cost FCPS approximately $540 per student who applied for an early contract. And FCPS demonstrated a 1% increase in diverse qualified teacher applicants for the approximately $234,000 the division invested in operating funds. FCPS identified an investment of approximately $350,000. This included $93,000 for the job fairs, $16,700 for T4T, and $234,000 for recruitment partnership building, staff resources, materials, and other resources. All teaching positions will be filled by July 1st. We met or exceeded this target. We increased by 1.3% over baseline. We began this school year with 112 vacancies. The diversity of hired teachers will match the diversity of qualified teacher applicants in the pool. We made no progress during this reporting period. We want the percentage of hires in each subgroup to mirror the qualified applicant pool. In the first box with the 2018-19 diversity of hires for Asian candidates, our hires were equally represented, meaning we hired the same percentage that we had in our applicant pool, 7%. Unfortunately, in our next two categories, black and Hispanic hires, we did not see equal representation. You can see that our black hires were 8% of all of our hires, while our black applicants were 13% of our qualified applicants. Therefore, our black hires were underrepresented in comparison to the qualified applicant pool. You can see for Hispanic hires, it was 6% of all our hires. Hispanic applicants represented 7% of the qualified applicant pool. This subgroup continues to be underrepresented. At our work session on the 16th, our team will be able to also share the data points that are of interest to the school board, positions offered, positions accepted and/or In our hiring practices, we have monitored the implementation of revised school principal and teacher hiring processes. We've revised our staffing calendar to support a school's ability to be fully staffed for the opening of schools, and we have targeted our hiring for diversity. We've mandated training on teacher hiring practices. We've led conversations with hiring managers on the value of diverse candidates. Our TAM team has deployed staffing specialists to schools to have conversations with administrative teams. We've enhanced our data collection tools for tracking applicant diversity, and we've provided trainings to optimize the use of tools to screen applications and identify candidates to interview. At our work session on the 16th, we will provide the school board with our draft staffing calendar, and we will also have updates on our principal pool selection process. Our ROI analyses were explored for actions to improve performance in hiring, but were not completed because the actions were associated with minimal costs that relied primarily on existing positions absorbing the work. As more extensive actions target hiring performances, ROI analysis will be completed in the future. FCPS has restructured its hiring processes so that 97.6% of its teachers are hired before July 1. Targeted actions are being taken to ensure that positions often vacant on the first day of school, such as special education, will be the focus of spring hiring. The diversity data for hires currently shows little progress. We know we will continue our training and consider new ways to expand diversity of Hiring data will be available to all schools so that HR can support conversations regarding implicit bias in hiring. HR is scheduled for the February All County Principal Meeting to be a featured guest to do professional development training at this All County Principal Meeting around HR topics and themes. Next for our review is retention. Employee retention rates will be within the national average. We met or exceeded this target. You can see that our retention rates met or exceed, this includes for teachers, administrators, and operational staff. The national average is 85%. While these retention numbers are high and above the national average, we acknowledge there is continued work to be done around employee engagement and the building of positive work climate. Our Human Resources Advisory Committee spent last year tracking and talking about retention efforts and other tracking and talking about retention efforts and other HR-related themes. Currently, the Department of Human Resources retention efforts are as such: our onboarding processes, the supporting of Great Beginnings, the Employee Assistance Program, our wellness programs, robust benefits and compensation, professional development, the colleague assistance program, and as I mentioned earlier, deploying teams to schools from HR to work with and coach principals and other admin teams on hiring practices. Our principals also have access to their retention data and will have access to the employee engagement data. Our principals work collaboratively with their region assistant superintendents to have conversations that incorporate engagement strategies in their school improvement processes. Included data on the diversity in retention as well as recruitment and hiring in the division's new equity profile. We've also supported the redesign of Great Beginnings induction program for new teachers in collaboration with our partners in OPLFE, and we have continued to fortify the colleague assistance program for first, second, and third-year teachers, making sure that teachers who needed the support had access to coaching and mentoring that they need to be successful. FCPS invested approximately $41,000 in Great Beginnings during school year 1819. A one-point increase in overall retention. During 1819 retention among first-year teachers who attended Great Beginnings was 8 percentage points higher than among first-year teachers who did not attend the program. The total FCPS cost for Great Beginnings is $331,000. FCPS maintains an extremely high retention rate reflecting most staff want to continue to work for FCPS. For new teachers, the Great Beginnings program was shown to have a positive impact on retention, and we continue to use the Employee Engagement Survey to look at factors for retaining our teachers. Exceptional Employees' Future Considerations. FCPS should partner with groups that endeavor to attract high school and college students to the profession as well as career switchers. More detailed monitoring data needs to be collected to tie qualified applicants to the events that led to their application. And we encourage the participation of all new teachers in Great Beginnings, and we want to provide support to any employees who may be struggling in the profession. As the pool of teachers continues to decrease, more resources likely will be needed to expand recruitment efforts. We continue to fund and expand recruitment programs such as the Back to Fairfax, Teachers for Tomorrow, and Trades for Tomorrow. We support continued funding for Great Beginnings. And a one-time infusion of resources may be needed to build more robust data systems to track applicants from recruitment and application through hiring and retention. Market Competitive Compensation. Our final focus area is market competitive compensation. FCPS will maintain all pay scales within the 95% to 105% of market pay. We have progressed towards this target. In 1819, 88% of our scales were at market. We are grateful the school board, who in that same year approved the FY '20 budget that allowed 100% of our pay scales to be within the 95% to 105% of market pay for FY '20, as indicated by the dotted box. Revised teacher salary scales to provide 23 steps in each lane while maintaining all prior lanes. We gained approval from the school board for the FY '20 budget that included $55.2 million to bring the teacher's salary fully to market levels and to bring instructional and public health assistant salaries to 50% of the teacher's scale. And we implemented new pay structures to provide competitive salaries to school-based administrators as well as schedules A, B, C. During FY '19, FCPS was able to achieve pay scale equity to market levels for an investment of approximately $3.6 million per pay scale brought to market level, invested a total of $17.9 million to enhance five salary scales to fall within the 95% to 105% of market average, an additional infusion of $53.1 million for teacher salaries to move the final pay scale closer to market competitive levels in FY '19. In approving the FY '20 budgeting during the reporting year, all salary scales will have been brought to market level by the end of FY '20. FCPS will attain its desired outcome for market competitive compensation in 2020. To ensure FCPS salaries remain competitive will require ongoing review and analysis of salary scales and position classifications. Maintaining market competitive salaries, especially for teachers, is necessary for supporting FCPS's attainment of its premier workforce aspirations. The school board could consider whether FCPS's aspirations should be to have salaries at or above market, and sustaining market competitive compensation will require additional funding of salary increases over time. So as I conclude, a reminder, our work session will take place on the evening of December the 16th. In order to provide you with comprehensive answers, if there are questions that you have leading up to the December 16th meeting, please do not hesitate to email them to us so that my staff and I have the appropriate time to do the research needed to answer any questions that you may have, and certainly any questions that you may have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Nixon. I do have a number of board members that would like to comment, starting with Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. And again, look forward to an in-depth discussion at the work session on, that's what, 16th?
Yes, sir.
On 16th.
The evening.
And this is one of my favorite topics.
I know that.
You know that.
I do.
You know that. And with that in mind, first of all, I want you to ask superintendent, sorry that I have not given you heads up that I would be asking you this question, but that there was one of the follow-up questions, one of the, what do you call it? The follow-on motions when you adopted the budget earlier this year, was a motion from me, you know, asking superintendent to identify the primary factors that influence employee recruitment and retention to include compensation working condition and contract length, and recommend to the school board prior to presenting FY '21 proposed budget, a rationale and guidelines for supporting those factors and positioning FCPS as the regional benchmark for employee compensation. One more work session to be scheduled by the end of November 2019, and November's gone by, and we have December. We have one last work session for this board on December 16th. Do you think that December 16th, you may be presenting to us some of these?
You know, I'll have to go back. There are a lot of next steps. I'll have to go back. I do recall you asking, and we'll work with staff to have something on the 16th, as best as we can.
This was a follow-on motion. This wasn't one of the next steps. It was a follow-on.
It was a follow-on motion.
Follow-on motion. I mean, I'm asking you that because I, since this is the last time this board will have an opportunity to discuss about this very important issue, that we know that we have been able to bring up the salary level of our employees to a more or less market level, market competitive, and I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into make that happen. But for me, a market competitiveness is not good enough. We have to be a market leader. Not only the market leader compared to other surrounding school districts, but also comparing professional teaching with other professions. Teaching profession has to be more than competitive compared to other professions as well in order for us to be able to recruit the best people to come to teach us, teach our students. So I, if possible, at the next work session, I want to hear some thoughts from superintendent and Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and have some conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I have Ms. Keys-Gamara followed by Ms. Schultz.
Thank you for this report. I too look forward to this every year and enjoy working together to try to address the concerns. The sentence that sticks out to me, and I forget what page it was on, but it says that the diversity data shows little progress. And this isn't the first year that we've said that. And I have been, I know we moved to a different system where, you know, before applicants were going directly to the schools and then we made it more centralized. And I think I've asked this question in the past, whether we have considered coming up with a diverse panel to perhaps review some of our applicants. I know that the psychology of people interacting with one another, we tend to hire people who look like ourselves. And I'm not sure that that is helpful when we're trying to achieve both excellence and diversity, and I do believe that they go together. So I don't know if that is something that has been considered, but I look forward to perhaps discussing what other steps we can take because I've been on this board for two years, and each year, the report has said the same thing, that we're making little progress toward that. And I know the psychology supports, you know, that the diversity in our classrooms improves education for all of our students, et cetera. And so I know that this is important for all of us. You also had some retention notes there with respect to that our numbers are in line or above the national numbers. I would be asking for disaggregated numbers during the work session.
Sure.
I am concerned, just based on some of the conversations that I've had with some of our staff members and people who have even left FCPS, that when we don't have diversity on our staff, then sometimes our teachers feel less supported. So that would be my next follow-up question is, what additional steps can we recommend or would we like to implement in order to support people? Because I think as I look at those quarterly and even monthly reports that are disaggregated, I do see some disparities on who's leaving as opposed to who is not leaving. And so I would be looking for those supports. I would be looking for disaggregated information with respect to retention. I'm looking for other steps that we can take because we've tried a couple of things and I haven't seen the needle move. So that's what I'll be looking forward to discussing.
Yes, and I think that Mr. McDonald can talk on the 16th about the teams that he's deployed to the schools and the kinds of conversations that they're having with principals as they look, school by school, at their hires.
And also, as we look at the Teach for Tomorrow program, I'd love to see the disaggregated numbers for who was offered contracts and who participated.
And who's currently enrolled.
Yes, and who's currently enrolled. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
So I have a couple of questions, and you may or may not know the answers right off the top of your head, but you can do your best. Do you know how many student teachers we have each year?
Over 200.
Over 200, and how many of those do we convert to teachers?
We'll get the figure for you.
Okay, so I'd like that for the work session. Because the question is, what's the rate of conversion? Are we bringing student teachers here who have no interest in ultimately working for us? And if our conversion rates are poor, then maybe we should consider with whom we do student teachers and who we accept as student teachers. Because I think there should be a plan in place, an incentivization plan, because if we like them and they like us, you know, we should work something out on that. How many employees do we have who are not teachers?
One moment. So there are 15,818 teachers, but our total is 28,407. So what's that, 23?
And a whole lot more who are part-time or not full-time.
Right.
Like, to my knowledge, like 14 and a half thousand, right? So we have roughly more than double the number of people between full-time and part-time of employees who are not teachers in our entire cadre of employees, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I haven't seen any of these statistics and goals related to non-teacher hires. So are you planning on hiring the same number of Asian, black, Hispanic, and white, I don't know, janitors as match the population?
It's not a metric here, no.
Okay, are we going to do it with bus drivers? Are we going to do it with food service personnel? Anyone?
That's for the board to determine. The board approved these metrics. If the board wants to change these metrics, the board can do so.
I'm making the point.
The metric right now is because we have a teacher shortage in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we have a diverse population of kids, and there's research about the power of role models that look like the kids. That's why the board, I believe, chose that metric, and that's what the metric is. We'll be glad to look at a different metric if the board so chooses.
Well, I think that the public needs to be aware that we only have a metric of matching the population of color of people in our population to a teacher. I don't think we have it for IAs. I don't think we have it for counselors. I don't think we have it for, you know, ATS staff, psychologists. There are a lot of other people kids come in contact with, and the notion that only a teacher fits these is problematic. And in a national teacher shortage, when we have 307,000 teachers missing from the national teaching roles, the notion that we're going to fill these roles means by default, I don't know, and I've asked this before, what's the population of teachers by race nationally graduating with teaching degrees that meet the criteria, our basic criteria? And we're talking everything from not just like that they graduate, but, you know, what are their scores? And to my knowledge, that's never been presented to us. The next thing is, is that I haven't heard an update on where we are. We keep hearing about Teachers for Tomorrow, but Trades for Tomorrow. Going back to 40% of our own employees in the support personnel trades positions are eligible to retire within 10 years. You know, how are we moving on that? And, you know, employee retention, that's not possible if they're eligible for retirement, and they do retire, and we have a sucking vacancy. and, and they do retire, and we have a sucking vacancy in our trades personnel. And that goes to our, our role in creating that, you know, the CTE opportunities for students. And whether that's not a metric is moot. We've created that as a, as a pilot, and it is an urgent and compelling need that, you know, we're not, if we don't start solving a 10-year problem now, if we don't have a structure for that now, that's how you get to strategic vision and, and long-term strategies for building solutions before they are a burgeoning, pressing problem, that you're trying to come up with strategies of how to hire trades personnel when we can start to begin to solve that problem today.
So the Trades for Tomorrow program would not have been tracked in last year's data, but we can certainly track it on a go-forward basis. To your point about the workforce that's aging out and retiring in those types of positions, that could be a metric that we could look at implementing. I think we're going to take a look at these perhaps in the spring. Perhaps the new school board members will want to have an opportunity to look at what some of these metrics are, and we can certainly have an update for you on the Trades for Tomorrow and kind of where we are in that process. I, I just had a clarifying question. When you said something about the, the total number of teachers in teacher prep programs across the country, number of teachers by race.
And, and like, for example, but, but it's not just who graduates. What are their praxis scores? What is the, you know, where, who would we want to, what would be a highly qualified, because a highly qualified teacher by, you know, I don't know, East Jibib, may not be a highly qualified teacher according to our standards.
Right.
So of the universe of people who are graduating, there, you know, the, the problem is people aren't going into getting teaching degrees in the first place, and they certainly aren't by different races. And so if they aren't by different races, the universe of those who are eligible to even, you know, graduate with a, a teaching degree and then make a highly qualified ranking by, you know, certifications, praxis scores, et cetera, becomes infinitesimally smaller. And then, oh, by the way, living in, you know, one of the most expensive counties to live in the United States of America, the people who could afford to do that become even smaller. So, you know, you know, this, this board has set out to, what I'm basically saying is, to some degree, we have made no progress because we have set out an impossible task. I mean, I'm not, I'm not blaming you, I'm blaming the board, and that there should be metrics like, okay, who's eligible to retire within the next 10 years? Who is retiring? You know, we, we're working together on HARC, on getting statistics on who, who is actually leaving? What are those hard-to-maintain roles? And so some of this is the messaging on, yep, we've got, we've got some metrics, guess what, we're not, we're not striking it. You also have, you know, record employment rates, low unemployment. So all becomes more and more difficult to, how do you, how do you draw people here under those circumstances? And that's why I asked the question. The leading question was about the student teachers, is that should be our first eye. Not only the Teach for Tomorrow, that's the, that's a longer-term strategy. Short-term strategy is, hey, if we, you know, you know, hook somebody to be a student teacher here, how do you convert the sale of, hey, you and, we like you, do you like us? And then how do you, how do you convert that? Because now you start closing that gap on, you know, we've sort of helped create a teacher that we like.
Right.
And, and we're already there, and that shortens the HR cycle, you know, that we heard from our Cvent luncheon the other day is, the people, the people, the people. And you make that, you actually save us money on the HR cycle.
Yep.
If we're already familiar with the, with the candidate.
And Ms. Schultz, if I may, I think it's an excellent point about looking at the retention rate on, on our student teachers. That's an excellent point, and let's see if we can have that data. I don't know if that's a data point we've looked at before. I do recall you also asking, last time we did the Goal Three Report, about the national snapshot of the, the people graduating. I need to go back and see with this team how available that data is, how it's divvied up. If, if it's out there, we, we can certainly have it for you at the, at the work session for some additional discussion.
We have.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Ms. McLaughlin?
I know it's quite tempting for all of us to jump in and start asking questions and wanting to dig into this report, so I'll, I'll try to avoid that and just stay very high level. One of the things, Dr. Brabran, you know, is continues to be a concern of mine, and I'm going to raise it again when we vote on the report next for caring culture, is our metrics. And you noted just earlier that the board voted on the metrics. So I'm going to ask, can, at, at the work session, someone please find out, when did we vote on the metrics? I want to know the date of the work session, I want to know the date of the school board meeting, of when those metrics were presented to the board, discussed, reviewed, and voted on, because I, I continue to be troubled by these metrics. I don't think a lot of them really get to the heart of the important work we need to do, and so if it keeps coming back that it's the board's fault, then with the new board, we need to fix it. Because here's the thing, I, I get told as a board member for the last eight years that my job is to govern and to be a good steward, and I absolutely respect that important work. It's not our job to do operations. But it is concerning to me that we have reports that I don't think actually get to the operational substance. And I'll give you an example. I served on the HRASC as the liaison, and Dr. Nixon, you were excellent at supporting the Human Resources Advisory Committee's requests that we really look strategically at teacher retention, that it's not how we're doing as a division, because as you noted, nationally, we're doing well. And the data chart shows that. So that doesn't really help this board, it doesn't really help you, Dr. Brabran, or the division to get any better at it. What we do know through the HRASC is, we have pockets of excellence and we have pockets of challenges among our 200 schools. That's what I want to see in a report. That's what I want to see you and your staff saying, we recognize we're doing great at the national level, maybe how are we doing at the state level? How are we doing in the WABE level? But more importantly, we know that what's happening here is, it can look very different from school to school. That would be an example to me of how this report would have real value add to you guys and to this board. That's just an example. When we look at the diversity of our hiring practices, one of the things that didn't get covered in the slides, but I saw it in appendix, I think it was on the last page of the report, 23. Again, I want to compliment you, and Dr. Brabran, I'll just say this, I'm finding more and more in these goal reports, the appendix has all of the data that needs the analysis that could be beneficial, I believe, to this division and to this board. And so I would like for us to use our new board as an opportunity to not say, well, this is how it's always been done, or I'm just giving you what the board wanted, because I don't think, I want you, as our superintendent, to say, this report isn't any more meaningful to me than it is to you guys, and let's redesign it. So I'll just say this, we don't talk at all about the fact that we are not doing well in retaining and even attracting and hiring male teachers. I mean, that's a, a real important piece. And so what, do I blame FCPS as the mother of three boys, that they didn't have more male teachers? No. I mean, my father was a teacher, and like many, it's a very difficult profession to raise a family on, and as a result, it's also been viewed as a female-dominated position, particularly at the elementary school level. I mean, there's all these reasons. We can't control what happens with the hiring pool if it's not there. And we've seen that, that we have underrepresentation in just our applicant pool for Hispanics and Asians as well. So those are things that, what's in our sphere of influence? And then what do we do? It looks like when they're qualified, we're doing a great job of hiring them, but there are certain things that I, I want us to put our energies in the right place, I guess, is what I'm saying. So I, I know, I said a lot, so I'm just going to stop.
If, if I could, Ms. McLaughlin, excellent points. We'll definitely get the information about when we did have the board finally review it. In fact, we actually, as I recall, and we'll get the information, that we showed you at first draft, there was some feedback, and then we actually brought it back for a final vote to make a tweak on the indicators. But I will tell you this, part of your own evaluation process, which I'll speak to for me, is to be a more, to be more assertive about what do I see as the vision for Fairfax County over the next several years, and to assert that through the strategic plan. I already met with the leadership team this week and told all the goal champions, I want you to go back and do a comprehensive review of each one of these goals, the indicators, and to bring the new board what we think, again, taking the best of what we've already shown you, and there's a lot of good stuff in here, but there may be some stuff that really is not necessarily appropriate, is not the right indicator, as you pointed out on a few of the goal reports. And our staff is energized and excited to do that. So I'm looking forward, I, I know you will be a part of that new board, I'm looking forward to bringing some of those revised indicators in the spring, long before these next reports come, so that we can actually be on the same page together as we head for the next round of goal reports in the fall. So thank you for your feedback, it's very appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran, and again, thank you, Ms. Nixon.
And Dr. Brabran, if I might add, we voted on the plan on March 7th. The board voted on the strategic plan, metrics, and targets on March 7th of 2019.
The, we voted on, not, as he mentioned, there's indicators and there's metrics.
So the metrics and targets were voted on, on March 17th. There were a couple of amendments, we changed some of the aspirational language, but that vote occurred on March, March 7th, I'm sorry, March 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that clarification. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you, and thank you very much for your excellent presentation. I just have a couple of questions that we can get the answers for when we have the work session.
Sure.
Three areas. I know that special education is a particularly difficult hiring area, and when we have a work session, I'd like to know, do we know any breakout in special ed? Is it our teachers who we need to work with are most challenged children, are CAT-B Enhanced Off Program? I'd love to know how much we know about those teacher shortages in special ed.
And, may I just clarify?
Sure.
So, did I also hear you say that you wanted to know what kind of support we offer to a struggling special ed teacher? Was that part of it?
Well, it's more, I'm more interested in knowing where the, I'm aware of supports that we offer, and was working very hard with that, but I'm just curious as the pool, because we know the shrinking.
Okay.
And, and I must admit, the decline in the pool is, is very frustrating. I certainly remember when we used to say we had 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 200 qualified applicants for, there was a time.
There was a time.
And we, we had the pick. And the fact that it's declined again, that is extremely worrisome. And it also means that the, where we have partnerships with George Mason and other organizations, where we do have an opportunity to look very closely at candidates, and I know if they are successful, it's my experience, when they're in my schools, they get hired. So, but anyway, would like a little more information on special education, because we get data just says special education, but I, I suspect that there are some areas in special education that are even more challenging. The other is, as we are struggling to hire all the teachers we need, I'm wondering, do we have data yet on how our sister schools in the WABE guide are they experiencing? Are some more successful than we are, because during the Great Recession, Arlington, we knew we're taking a lot of our people? And whether or not we're all kind of equal now?
We can do that benchmarking and have that for you on the 16th.
Yeah, I would like to know a little bit more about that.
I, I can tell you the, the sub-s shortage is universal.
Is hu, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, when you have low unemployment.
Right.
That becomes very, very difficult. Then, and I don't remember if you said in the report, do we have information on people who we offer a position to, and then they decline us?
So on the 16th, we will have positions offered, accepted, declined, and broken that down by gender and race.
Great, that's, yeah, I thought I'd heard you say that.
That's right.
Because I do hear that.
Yes.
From principals who think they've got a great hire, and then they go somewhere else.
Yes.
And, is that it? I think so. Just an interesting, just anecdotal situation that I find, since I have schools that border on Loudoun County and on Arlington County, the schools that are closer to Loudoun County seem to be a little more successful. There is, there is more affordable housing, where you don't have to drive so far. So I don't know, I, I know in, sometimes the people who either leave us or decline an offer don't always tell us why.
Right.
But certainly, long commutes can be, can be an issue. So I think that was it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for this excellent report, Dr. Nixon. I wanted to start with a couple of things that I'm, I'm so excited to see. Of course, it's important to acknowledge that it's, it was a huge accomplishment that we have finally succeeded in the last fiscal year in bringing up the salary scale and completed that major effort, which has been long a, a goal of this board. So it, that was excellent work that we were able to accomplish that.
Yes.
And I, I just didn't want to go without pinpointing that as something that was really important for our school system. So moving forward, of course, our goal has been 95 to 105% of the market, and the fact that, that we have achieved that is fantastic. At the same time, I do think that, considering the environment, we probably need to start setting a new goal of getting beyond that, going to the point.
Mr. Moon's point, right.
I believe Mr. Moon has made that point in the past, and that it's, we probably need to say, if we are going to continue to be the premier school system that we have been, to continue to be, that that goal needs to change. It has to be above market scale. So I would support doing that, although it won't be in my time on the board that we revisit that, but I do think that, that we're going to need to do that. Also, the fact that we are filling more of the positions, I know a few years back, we had more, more vacancies at the beginning of the school year, and that was of great concern. Could you give me the numbers? I believe Dr. Brabran has, has cited these numbers recently. The 90, 97.6% that were filled, what does that translate to in the number of vacancies that we had this year versus the year before and the, and perhaps the year before that, if you, if you have that handy? I believe we had far fewer vacancies this year than, than last year and the year before. Is that correct?
I'm going to do off the cuff, and let's see if staff has it. I think we are pretty close this year to being around the same. We had 90 this year, we had maybe around that same, give or take, five or 10. The year before that, we were much higher.
Right.
200, so.
Adjusting the staffing calendar.
We've knocked it down by half, we kind of flatlined this year on the, on the number of vacancies. We really want to still keep getting it down to zero. But even when we've had those vacancies, often we've been able to staff it with a long-term sub at the beginning of the year and try to convert some of those long-term subs into permanent positions.
And some of those vacancies are due to, you know, last-minute registrations and influx and, you know, students at a particular school. So sometimes the, the vacancies happen in September or October, just depending on, on enrollment numbers.
That, that is a very good point, and this does speak to our high-mobility schools.
Yes.
I know this year, at one of my schools, they were expecting, I believe, 10 kindergarteners and kindergarten, kindergarten classes.
Yeah.
And ended up with 13.
Right.
And that happened very close to the beginning of the school year. So that's, that's a very important point.
That will impact it, right.
And it's, it's, I also think, it also speaks to how, particularly at our high-mobility schools, we need to be retaining some of those positions, even if it doesn't initially look like the students were, are going to come. I have had some principals say, I knew they were going to come, they had not registered yet, but I knew they were going to come, but the position got called because they weren't there yet, and the projection was different. So I do think that particularly at, at schools that have a history of high mobility, we need to be a little bit more proactive in those places and provide those positions in the spring. Now, it's, it's hard to pull positions if the, the kids don't come, but I would rather err on the side of caution than having principals struggling in August trying to find somebody at the last minute.
Ms. Evans, I do want you to know, I believe in Dr. Nixon's share, that we're trying to be a little bit more, in the old, old days of Fairfax, it was, let's just look at enrollment in, in September, when we're trying to make these staffing decisions or using the staffing reserve. We are starting to look at data beyond just that September time to say, well, what's it going to look like in three months? What's the What's the historical data say? And try to give schools more of that benefit of the doubt for increased enrollment that may happen over the year. Now, that said, I know a couple of years ago, you had a big spike in the middle of January, even beyond just a few months into the year.
Yep.
Those are probably the hardest to predict for.
Mm-hmm.
And as you know, we just shared with the, both boards, the board supervisors and you all, for our budget, our enrollment last year was relatively flat, actually slightly down, and we were projecting, and actually saved in the budget last year, 6 million in enrollment, and at mid-year, excuse me, at our mid-year forecast for the next year's budget, we talked about enrollment being projected to be up like 1,300 kids at the cost of additional 20 million. So, we, we, we still do have this fluctuation that you talk about that's extremely difficult to manage, but I do want you to know, we're being more dynamic in looking at staffing patterns than just what's hitting us in August or early September.
Okay. Well, and I had advocated in the past that we could crank into our staffing formula for high mobility schools to provide another position or two, because they certainly can use them for, for, for other reasons. So, I don't see, we've never done that, you know, we've never cranked mobility into it, but my advocacy is that we do, in part, because, for one thing, high mobility schools, whether they get a flood of kids or not, they do have extra challenges there. So, I would, I will continue to advocate that, that that would be useful for, for schools that are, most of them have multiple challenges, high poverty, high English language learners, and high mobility together. So, as far as, so, so I'm glad to hear that, that our vacancies are, are far fewer. I suspect, though, that where they are, they are in particular areas such as special education, that typically, other than the, where you're talking about.
Yes, special education.
That's, that's our highest need. So, and that seems to be an ongoing issue, so. I, I also, looking at slide 15 of the presentation, if we could go there, on, on Monday, I will want to delve a little deeper into some of these statistics, and I'm glad that you're, that this is going to be, that you're going to have some breakdowns on, yeah, that one, on offers versus acceptances.
Yes.
I think that that could shed some light on this as well. But I, I would like to know, I'm looking at some of these numbers, and looking at the number of qualified black applicants versus those hired, the number of Hispanic applicant, qualified applicants versus those hired. I think because those remain underrepresented, these are, these are presumably, well, it says that, they're qualified applicants. I would like to know a little bit more about why, why such a small percentage of those who are qualified, who we deem as qualified, have not in fact been hired. It, it is a matter of, of concern, you know, the, the lack of diversity, and I know that, that school systems around the country struggle with this, but we do know that it is important, it's critically important for children to have teachers and other staff in the building that look like themselves, and that they can go to, that they can particularly relate to. So, I, I will want to delve a little bit.
Sure.
More into those numbers. But thank you so much.
Yes.
And we'll have more conversation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
Just a very quick go back, I just wanted to acknowledge, we got an email earlier tonight, making sure that we also are aware that there are vacancies in bus drivers. Now, that's not part of this report.
Yes.
But, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did get that email, to pay attention to that at some point as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. And I'll just make a brief comment. I had the opportunity last night to meet with colleagues that sit on both the Loudoun and Arlington boards, and the conversation about teacher recruitment and retention came up. And it was fascinating, because both, it was actually Manassas City, Loudoun, and Arlington, and all are facing the same challenges we are in, in hiring a diverse teacher pool. One of the questions I have is whether we need to be more strategic in developing relationships. I know we do recruiting at the, we send recruiters to Puerto Rico, we send recruiters to the HBCUs, but maybe we need to, rather than sending the recruiters at the end of the student's experience, actually start the relationship with the students earlier on, when they embark upon their education journey, and create that mentoring experience for them, maybe even virtual relationships between students at various universities and mentors in our school systems, so that we develop that, that relationship that is so critical to someone choosing Fairfax, because it is a buyer's market, it is not a seller's market when it comes to attracting a diverse teaching pool. So, that's just an idea.
Right, thank you.
Maybe we should start thinking from that perspective. I will be asking at our work session to have a bit more detail on our principal pool.
Sure.
Because I continue to hear that we do not have a sufficient number of candidates or the depth of the pool that we need to satisfy all of the demand for principals, and so hopefully, we can have a more robust discussion about that.
We will.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Nixon. And with that, we'll continue on with the rest of the meeting. Since we have no actions from our closed session, I will continue on to the strategic plan Goal II, Caring Culture Report, and I call on Ms. Evans for her motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the strategic plan Goal II, Caring Culture Report as detailed in the agenda item.
Seconded by Mr. McElveen. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your motion?
Oh, just briefly, yes. I wanted to, particularly for the members of the public, to understand what this is that we're doing tonight. We have four goals, one of which is caring culture, Goal II, Caring Culture, as part of our strategic plan. And this is the goal where we look in particular at, we measure and set goals for creating a welcoming environment in our schools, and for student and employee health, as well as being culturally responsive. So, we have looked at this goal report, we had a presentation at a previous board meeting, and we've had a work session on this, and had quite a few questions answered on this goal report. I will just briefly read some of the aspirations of this goal. All students, families, and staff will feel, feel respected and included at school. All staff will view student behavior through a culturally responsive lens. All students will report healthy social, emotional skills and lifestyle behaviors on the Fairfax County Youth Survey. All schools will have low rates of students with frequent absences. No student will have disruptive behavior referrals, and all employees will have the opportunity to take care, take advantage of wellness resources. So, we have certainly made progress in some areas, in others, we continue to, to need to make other improvements. We have made some, some improvements on, in terms of healthy life choices, the drug and alcohol free metrics as measured by the Fairfax Youth Survey. Many of the measurements here are based on the youth survey, by the way. So, we have seen some declines there. At the same time, we know that we have seen very disturbing increases in vaping, and that's something that this board knows it, it must address. This is something that is of great concern. It is also, we have completed a significant amount of equity and cultural responsiveness training for our employees. We have created a chief equity officer to make sure that we promote our values of equity throughout the school system. Again, we have more work to do, and we know we do, but we will continue working towards the goal of making sure that every child is, excuse me, welcome and, and, and fully included in the school environment, and has teachers who, and other staff members who are culturally responsive. We also know that we, we do have some more work to do in terms of nutrition and exercise and sleep. I will point to some of the improvements on the nutrition front. We have 82 salad bars now that were added as part of our Healthy Food Choice Program. We have more summer food programs, free meals for needy children during the summer. We have more schools that have free meals for all children at the schools without having to fill out forms or prove that they qualify for free and reduced meals, as well as, excuse me, a super snack program. So, we have made gains in terms of breakfast, lunch, summer programs, and after-school snacks as well. So, we have made, made significant strides there. We know we need to do a better job on sleep. We, we did see improvements with our later high school start times, which were approved in 2014 and implemented in 2015. We saw improvements at the high school level, but at the same time, we, we didn't do as well at the middle school level, where at most middle schools, they went somewhat earlier. And that's something that this board has vowed that they will address, to help our middle schoolers get the sleep that they need as well. So, that, that will fall to the, the next board. At the same time, as Ms. Williams said in her testimony earlier, we certainly can use more mental health resources for our students, school counselors, psychologists, and, and other people who help advise our children on mental, mental health needs. So, this is, basically is a snapshot of where we are in terms of our caring culture, and it shows us both where we have improved, and it shows us where we need to continue to, to do work. So, I will support this goal report and urge my colleagues to do so as well.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your second?
Nothing further, thanks.
Seeing no, Ms. McLaughlin?
My apologies, I thought my light was already on. I know it's late, so I will just, at a very global level, share with all of you what I shared at the work session with Dr. Braybrand. I will not be supporting this report. I do appreciate staff efforts to bring a lot of helpful information to this goal report, and I do actually want to point out that, once again, there's really important information in the appendices that, as a board member, I found very helpful to get a snapshot of where we are. But Dr. Braybrand, I just want to give you one example of what concerns me about the data analysis piece that I've shared, is my concern, that I really think we have to maybe have a deeper conversation with the pressure that I think staff feels to adhere to this return on investment type statements. And so, as a result, things get said like on page 26, "None of the actions FCPS undertook in relation to exercise or sleep seem to be supporting improved performance." And yet, the next sentence says, "Better school-level data would support FCPS's ability to tie its actions to more, tie its actions more directly to outcomes." That second sentence, as you know, with your doctoral degree, is the accurate sentence, that we don't necessarily have the data for the causality, necessarily the correlation. But to make statements like the, the first one, about none of the actions undertook were supporting improved performance, we don't even, A, know that, B, in the report on another page, it made the comment that the 2.6 million we invested in social workers and psychologists didn't demonstrate that it actually helped students with healthier social, emotional needs. Again, I mean, we know through research and best practice that social workers and psychologists have a positive impact, and simply because there was one metric that was being said, okay, the only metric we can find to tie it to that 2.6 million investment to do an ROI analysis, doesn't show that piece, so basically, the statement was that, that money didn't produce anything. I, I just think that's a problem, not only if I were a social worker and psychologist in the school division, but I also think that it does a disservice to your deep commitment, and this board's deep commitment of recognizing that, as we add more social workers and psychologists to our school system, we know that that's going to have better outcomes for kids. So, I, I look forward to, you know, our continued work to try and figure out, you, you do have 12 board members to have to please, I do understand that, so I'm just one voice, but as Mr. Smith noted earlier, on March 7th, when this board approved metrics, if I vote yes, then I'm going to have Mr. Smith going, "You didn't like the report, but your vote was there." So, I am just making sure you understand why I can't vote tonight.
Absolutely. And one of the interesting things I've learned on this, for both glows and grows, if it's a glow, we can talk about it when we introduce it as new business, we can talk about the glow at the work session, and we can talk about the glow when it's up for final action. I've also learned that the converse is true, when it's a grow, there's a chance to hear the grow with the new business, sometimes we hear the grow at the work session, and then when we have the vote. So, I heard the message, I did hear your message earlier when we had the work session about the deeper data analysis, and as I made reference earlier, I've already talked to the leadership team about how we're going to do goal reporting differently, more assertively, with some real focus more on, on the analysis, and maybe less, less data, more analysis, and some different indicators to put forward. Some of you already asked for that as next steps. If the stuff's already high, let's not just have a strategic plan that's a rah-rah document, but that's pushing us deeper and deeper into more aggressively pursuing the goals of being a premier school district. So, that message has been heard, and I'll leave it to you to determine when we have the spring, up, update on the indicators, if you feel we've got the message, and then that'll help inform our fall reporting next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Mr. Moon?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note that I'll be abstaining on, on this score's report, because I missed the board's discussion at a work session, because I was out of town.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I will remind board members that we will be relooking at the metrics in the strategic plan this spring as part of the more systematic annual review of our metrics as good governance in the strategic planning process. With that, I am going to call for the vote. The motion before us is that the school board approve the strategic plan Goal II, Caring Culture Report as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? We have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Kiesgahmara, Ms. Evans, Ms. Corbett Sanders, those opposed, Ms. McLaughlin, those abstaining, Mr. Moon, and Ms. Schultz, that motion carries. Air adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided. Sorry, I was hearing something else. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Item 6.01, award the contract for the rooftop air handling unit replacements at Chantilly High School to the lowest responsive and responsive bidder, Edward Kokarian and Company, Inc., in the amount of $757,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the board. Item 6.02, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed. Item six point zero two, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Seven, new business, the following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. Seven point zero one, approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the fiscal year 2020 mid-year budget review as detailed in the agenda item. Seven point zero two, award the contract for the rooftop unit and condensing unit replacements at Bull Run Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the board. Seven point zero three, approve the strategic plan goal three, premier workforce report as detailed in the agenda item. Now we come to superintendent matters. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Couple things. It's Inclusive Schools Week. I hope you've seen some of the activities going on in our schools to celebrate Inclusive Schools Week. It celebrates the progress that schools make in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population and bringing awareness to the needs so that we can meet every child by name and by need. This year's theme was Charting the Course for Inclusive Schools, helping us reflect on our current practices and looking at next steps to create better access, better opportunities, and more authentic relationships. I really am proud. Inclusive Schools Week is part of really the equity focus that we need to have in Fairfax, and we're going to continue to commit to serve every child by name and by need. I want you to know about the Davis Center. They've got a great new employee partnership, the Davis Center, with the Hyatt Regency in Tyson's Corner. Eight Davis students are going to be included in meetings, social events, and the day-to-day task of maintaining a high-end busy hotel and restaurant. We've been talking about we have to continue to work to redesign, I really think, our high school experiences for more apprenticeships and internships. So I'm so excited that the Hyatt team and hotel manager John Davenhall is working with the Davis Center to give our kids this just amazing opportunity. We've been talking about JET tonight, and sustainability is an important part of what we've been looking at. I want you to know that Fairfax continues to receive, with Mr. Plattenberg and Mr. Smith's leadership, first place Fairfax County received in the academic category of the 2019 Virginia Energy Efficiency Leadership Awards, and it's sponsored by the Virginia Energy Efficiency Council. It's just wonderful to see, and that these organizations recognize school districts that are saving money on energy bills by reducing energy consumption and stimulating job growth. We were honored specifically for our program Get to Green, which many of you know about, and several of you championed, and a key component of it was a thirteen percent reduction in energy use from 2013 to 2018. Think about that, thirteen percent reduction, even as we were growing in the number of students in the school system, and that saved us $23 million in energy cost. I also want to bring your attention to the Student Healthcare College and Career Fair. Falls Church Academy and the Health Occupation Students of America will be having the Second Annual Fair. It's on Monday, January twenty-seventh. I know it's a month away, but want to just mention it to you now, the twenty-seventh, from nine to noon at Falls Church High. It's going to be open to all FCPS students to learn more about healthcare certification programs. I mean, talk about jobs and opportunities. We're really seeing an amazing healthcare industry growing right here in northern Virginia, and really growing just a mile down the road here with a Nova that's cutting-edge medical sciences. So we're excited. We're going to have representatives from medical colleges, the healthcare industry, and the military to help answer questions about healthcare careers. And then finally, I want to mention the Foundation for FCPS Luncheon. Yesterday, so many of our board members and members of our business community came out to support our Education Foundation for our 2019 Leaders and Learners Luncheon. We had three hundred-plus leaders in the business community. We recognized our teacher grant recipients. We had twenty-three corporate sponsors, and nearly $60,000 was raised yesterday for our foundation's program. So really thrilled. Want to thank Elizabeth Murphy and Amy Verden. Elizabeth's our executive director, and Amy is our master of all support there in the foundation office for coordinating another outstanding event. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I now call on Ms. Strauss for board matters.
Thank you. I want to, I want to thank all of the committee members that came out to the initial budget boundary scoping meetings. We had two this week, and they were extremely well-attended, and I'm very grateful for staff that helped facilitate it. We had hundreds of people both nights, and folks worked very hard in small groups, recording their ideas, wishes, lies, and dreams, and staff will take all of their ideas that were recorded. It will be published on a special website, and committee members can ask more questions. And a lot of this very important input will be used, again, to craft actual recommendations in the fall. It will be the new board that will make this decision, but I am very grateful to the response, and this will help us. We hope begin to relieve some of the overcrowding at Langley and use the available classrooms at Langley. So thank you all very much, and thank you very much for staff, and I don't know if they're still here, Mr. Plattenberg and his staff, and our, yes, and our regional assistant superintendents, and we had many other people from many other departments, and it was great. It was very well done. I encourage people to take a look at the very concerts and performances now at our schools between now and winter break. I will be at Romeo and Juliet tomorrow night at Langley High School, and Hamlet at Herndon on Saturday evening, so thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, I think I'll just follow up on the JET as well, the Joint Environmental Task Force. We had our meeting just last night, actually, and just to catch up our board and the community on where we are with that, the Joint Environmental Task Force has really done a good job, I think, of getting off the ground. Last night, we set up subcommittees, and, you know, we basically work together as elected officials on the task force and people from the community who are on the task force. And we have four subcommittees that will begin to meet regularly, a subcommittee on energy, subcommittee on transportation, a subcommittee on workforce development, and one on waste reduction and recycling. And so we're excited about the work coming. I think, I know that both boards, the school board and the board supervisors, will begin to see recommendations from the JET in the new year. We will definitely, unfortunately, we will need to replace Ms. Palchuk and me on that task force, but I know we'll have some good new school board members coming in to take our place, and we will, the next board will have to figure out how to provide some staff support for that work. But anyway, very excited about it. I want to thank everybody who supported it. I want to thank our chair and Sharon Bolova, outgoing chair of the board supervisors for putting it together.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Palchuk?
Yes, thank you. And just in addition to what Ms. Hines shared, I know she and I and others have some forum topics which we may or may not get to on this board, but I am hopeful that the next board will continue to look at some of the things that will come out of the JET, as well as looking at our curriculum, looking at leading through waste reduction, recycling, et cetera, in our schools. So very excited about that. And I just want to thank the community members and Ms. Strauss and our facilities team and regions who helped. We had two, I think, very successful initial meetings at Langley High School on Monday night and at McLean High School on Wednesday night. I calculated at least two hundred in attendance at each one, and I know it was in a catering that got me counting quickly, but I know as an initial conversation, there's a lot out there about scoping. There is a website that will be posted, and is already posted for those who are not able to attend and want to see and provide input. This is really the beginning phase, that staff will take back what we receive from the community, and we'll come back in the spring with some more specific recommendations, ideas for what that scope could be for that boundary change. So I want to thank everyone for that. I also want to thank Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Duran, for the town halls with the Jewish Community Relations Council. Was that last night, two nights ago? And for making yourself vulnerable, sharing your stories, and for listening, and I think it's a good step forward for our community as we embrace, listen, and understand our differences, our similarities, where it comes to religion, background, et cetera. We are a very diverse and rich community, and the more we share our spaces and our stories, the better we will be moving forward. So with that, a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you. So a couple weeks ago, Ms. Evans, Ms. Kiesgahmara, and I took part in the IB World Team's visit to the Annandale High School Pyramid as they assessed that program, and so it was great to be part of that discussion along with Dr. Presidio. I was able to speak with a DECA class at Lake Braddock on careers and opportunities in both public service and the NGO sector. Yesterday, I was able to take part in the first episode of Chantilly High School's new podcast, so it's interesting to see a lot of the school journalism programs springing up those programs. I also had the opportunity to speak with the Marshall High School Women in Politics Group. I'm not a woman, but I did get to speak about the latter part of that title, about politics and things of that nature. I also had the opportunity to speak with Boy Scout Troop 1111 last night about leadership and public service. I will be at Romeo and Juliet on Saturday. Unfortunately, I'll miss you, Ms. Strauss, tomorrow night. Looking forward to visiting our friends at Langley. And perhaps most importantly, over the past couple of weeks, we have been gearing up for our legislative season with the opportunity to present to our newly-formed delegation in Richmond on our legislative priorities of this board, and I am confident that they will make progress, and if they don't, there's only one party to blame now. And finally, I know a lot of our colleagues had the opportunity to go to Williamsburg for the Virginia School Board Association Conference, and I have yet to see any compromising photos, so I look forward to seeing those. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Strauss, I want to report to you that I will be at Romeo and Juliet on Sunday at Langley High School, and that's a two o'clock performance. And as a, probably one of the bigger fans of football games, that I did get to watch two regional finals where both undefeated teams, perfect records of the 19-0, or the Manchester State final, it's a South County, and Westfield, unfortunately, they have to play against each other to the Manchester State final. I think, you know, I think Saturday at 3:30 at Westfield, at Westfield, I think VHS gotta do restructuring of a matching so that Fairfax teams don't have to play against each other in the semifinal, because I fully believe that both teams deserve to be in the final for championship trophy. But I'd be going there to watch and root for a Fairfax County team or teams. I'm a large member.
Ms. Kiesgahmara?
Thank you. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I was happy to attend the boundary meetings with Ms. Strauss and a number of our other colleagues and people from leadership staff. Very happy to have the community have an opportunity to begin the process of discussion and to feel as though they have a voice. I'm looking forward to future community meetings where we can perhaps bring in information for our community to understand what the challenges are that this board will be facing, including planned development, and how that can impact our schools, and whether we, the fact that this board has little to say about what development takes place or how many students are brought into our system. And so the more I discuss that with folks, I could see kind of them, a greater understanding that things were perhaps a bit more complex than they had initially anticipated. So it was a good discussion. I also was able to attend the Title I meeting where our leadership there discussed the Advanced Academics Program and was able to go to the Union Mill PTA, as well as the luncheon yesterday, which I enjoy very much, so I hope everybody has a great weekend. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, briefly, I just wanted to share with all of my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand that this past Monday, I joined our countywide DSA, Bill Curran, down at Richmond for a statewide forum called the Inside Out Educational Leaders Forum, and its efforts are being funded by the National Football Foundation and the Redskins Foundation to look at ways in which we can reform the win-at-all-cost culture that has taken over youth sports. And so it was an outstanding conference for the day. Not only was Bill there, but also Loudoun County and Arlington and many other school divisions throughout the Commonwealth were there for the day. The conversation was extremely compelling. Because the foundations are paying and supporting this, it means that it's free to school divisions to participate in this, and so I look forward to bringing more detailed information to the board and Dr. Braybrand, but both Bill Curran and I and two of his staff that were there were really pleased with that experience, and it's really come long overdue that we look at what we really want to ensure that youth sports play such a vital role in the development of our youth for lifelong reasons, and yet, we unfortunately have lost sight of making sure that it is a way for students to develop to their very best abilities. And one of the things they shared is three percent of all high school athletes will go on to play at the college level. One percent will go on from there to be a professional athlete. So what do we want high school sports and youth sports to be for our young people? The other thing is that at Wednesday skip meeting, Teresa Johnson was there, Deb Scott, Francisco Duran, we were, it was the whole countywide skip presentation, and it was about vaping, and the Public Health Department really drove home the message that we are facing a public health crisis in the United States when it comes to vaping. And again, I'll give a more written, detailed summary on it, but Dr. Braybrand, I just want to compliment your team, along with the county board supervisors and also the Public Health Department. There's a lot of really robust efforts being made. Probably the primary point that I really wanted to focus on is, as elected officials, the school board plays a really vital role of getting that information out to our families in a way that we don't always succeed in, went through our other social media. And so I would like to look for ways that we can build on and extend, because I know from talking to families in the Braddock District and even around the county, parents who are aware of the vaping and intensive addiction that comes from this, and then now the lung disease and lifetime lung injuries that are coming from this, it's serious. And then finally, just a shout-out to the Lake Braddock Symphony Orchestra and Symphonic Bands. They have both been selected for the National Music for All Festival that will take place later this year. It's the twenty-ninth annual festival. It is highly prestigious to be selected for this national stage, and they are both going to be performing at it, and as a result, they will have their winter concert on Monday evening, December ninth. So if you are a supporter of our wonderful Lake Braddock Bruins, I hope you'll come out and see the winter performance and help with the fundraising and support of the youth who are going to represent Fairfax County so well at this upcoming festival.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I can say unequivocally that I am very much in favor of the Westfield Bulldogs' victory this coming Saturday, which I think that I can reasonably anticipate, given their prior year's performances. They have an outstanding team again, and so best of luck to them. I had a wonderful Thanksgiving with my family. We had more than twenty of us got together. We had more than 20 of us got together, which is just actually a kind of a fraction of my immediate family because I'm one of seven children and all of my brothers and sisters have their families. And it was, it was really a wonderful family get-together. Sadly, we lost one of our bright lights and one of our students over the Thanksgiving break. And so, this Thanksgiving was tinged with the sadness, the reality that every day that we have is a blessing. And when we give thanks on Thanksgiving, we ought to all reflect and be so grateful and thankful for the blessings that we have in our own families because just as the leaves all dropped in a single day this year, we can have dramatic changes in our lives and lose those people around us that we love. And I love following Ms. McLaughlin because she's, always brings up issues that matter a great deal to me, in particular, mental health issues. And as our days get shorter and we head into this holiday season full of cheer, that's often a time when people that have mental health issues struggle the most. And so, when we have conversations about winning at all costs in our sports, we really need to take those conversations seriously. In my own view, I've always wondered why we can't have a system in our high schools that allows for intramural sports for those, all of the children who play Little League up to middle school and then end up going to high school and finding themselves shut out of athletics even though they would love to play in an intramural sporting event. And I think that's something that I would encourage the school system to look at finding a way to do that in our schools because we know now that those breaks that we give kids to cut the tension really do matter. This is pretty difficult for me because my own daughter is, you know, having her own challenges growing up. And this is not an easy time. And it hits really close to home when we lose beautiful children in our schools. So, please, parents, talk to your children, hug them, and make sure you understand what's happening in their lives. And don't be afraid to reach out. And just as Ms. Boteng talked about, meet, meet the school psychologists, find out what they're doing in their schools. And have them meet with your child to make sure they understand what's happening. Because we do have a highly pressurized school system, very test-driven, and the achievement expectations are often felt very intensely by children. And I always tell the kids, "Look, you're all very bright. If you want to go to college, there's going to be a seat for you. This isn't a cakewalk where some of you aren't going to be able to find a spot." And I really do mean that because life, and you're going to college, is just one step on the way. It's not, it's not the end of your future prospects if you don't achieve the first, the number one choice on your list. But please, families, parents, stay connected to your children, hug them close, love them during this time as the days get shorter and shorter. And let's, let's all be grateful for the time we have with each other.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Evans?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Wilson for his heartfelt comments. Those were excellent comments. And I, I think we can all agree that it's critically important for our families, for our entire communities, to be looking out for our kids, whether they come to us every day or just, just once. It is indeed important to listen to them and, as you say, hug them. So, thank you for, for that reminder, Mr. Wilson. Speaking of students, my, one of the favorite things that I do every year is meet with the student leaders at my high schools, the high schools that I represent. And I did that again a couple of weeks ago. I'm always so impressed with the insightful comments that they have and their concerns for their fellow students. So, I met with them over lunch. These were leaders from Justice High School, Annandale High School, and Falls Church High School. They had some wonderful ideas about inclusion of all students at their schools, including a need for more translation services. That was one of the things that they felt was, was important. The Annandale kids had good insights into the type of principal that they want to see because we are involved in a principal search right now. And the Falls Church students also had some, some very good comments about the upcoming renovation. So, I'm always very impressed with, with what they have to say. And the things that do have in my 10 years on the board have certainly helped guide me in terms of what direction we need to go and where our priorities need to be. So, I appreciate them sitting down with me and having that conversation. I was pleased also to join the Annandale Cub Scout PAC 150 the other night to discuss leadership. They also, these were, of course, younger children, but they also had great insights into ways that they can improve their schools and communities. A lot of it had centering around environmental stewardship. They're very aware of the need to be good to the earth and to recycle and to find ways to, to make our resources stretch. So, kudos to them and good luck to them in the very, both positive and realistic ideas that they had for, for making improvements. I also attended, as did Ms. Palchik, the town hall that was hosted by Temple Rudolph Shalom and sponsored by the Jewish Community Relations Council. The town hall, Dr. Brabran and Dr. Duran did an excellent job of furthering the conversation about equity and combating antisemitism. So, it was, it was quite a good discussion. So, I appreciated that that, that that was held and very, very good comments from, from audience members throughout and good answers from Dr. Brabran. It does remind us that we do need to take another look in the coming months on the religious observances. We have created a Religious Observances Task Force. And my own advocacy is I think it's time for us to recognize the major Jewish holidays and the major Muslim holidays and simply make them school holidays. I think it's time. As, there may be others as well. I see that Lunar New Year is being recognized now across the river. And we, we may need to be looking at that as well. So, I will look forward, even though it'll be after my time on the board, to seeing the conclusions of the Religious Observances Task Force. I want to make sure that people in my community know that Justice High School is having a meeting about the addition at Justice. That's this coming Monday, Monday the 9th at 6:30. Apparently, it's going to be a pretty, pretty short presentation because it comes right before a presentation on vaping. So, Justice High School community, come out and take a look at the plans for the addition and then stick around to talk about the issue of vaping, which as others have said, is, is in fact getting to crisis proportions in, in our community and throughout the country. And I just want to say lastly, how very appreciative I was of the goodbye reception that was held by the Mason District PTAs as a, as a goodbye to me. And Mrs. Strauss, thank you for attending as well and for your kind words. It was, I was very, very touched and appreciative. And thank you for Justice High School and Principal Maria for hosting that as well. And with that, I, we are into holiday season and I hope everyone is, is looking forward to, to having some relaxing time.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz?
Just a couple of things. If you've now preached in a Jewish temple, I can't wait for you to start coming and preaching to Catholic churches. Certainly, you know, picking and choosing winners and losers on who you go and talk to is not a path forward. So, I look forward to your ecumenical outreach. It was an amazing luncheon this week to be part of the foundation board luncheon, the recognition of our first prestigious out, former FCPS graduate and an alumni, Reggie Adjoal, the CEO of Seavent, his amazing story of perseverance and grit, which are actually the characteristics that I think should be the most significant in a portrait of a graduate. He was a self-professed, not particularly super student, but found a home in a debate club and developed a love of learning and philosophy and is now the CEO of a multi-billion dollar company that is housed right here in Fairfax County and paying us taxes. It's phenomenal. The, the work of the foundation, you know, has, you know, wonderful places to grow. I went early to the VSBA conference for early breakout session. And I was the only one there representing FCPS to listen to how foundations are run around the Commonwealth. Some very, very small school districts have foundations that have been around for decades. I have a few takeaways that I'll be bringing to the foundation board for my next board meeting. But one of the best was a fundraising opportunity. Yeah, the tractor poles were interesting, getting involved with the, you know, fire department and all the local civic organizations and the staff, all of that wonderful. The cow pie bingo that raised a school district thousands and thousands of dollars. And that's a little school district. Can you imagine how much money we would raise for cow pie, you know, bingo up here? Now, that's, that's some innovative fundraising. But it was a wonderful opportunity to see how foundations can be grown organically through community support. And that's what we saw in that foundation luncheon was the, the build towards bigger and better. And I was very pleased to be there.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I'm going to just take a couple of moments to look forward to the South County win on Saturday. I think we can all just really be excited about it at Westfield.
It's a Fairfax team.
It is a Fairfax team. No, with all seriousness. I'm so glad everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday in the beginning of our holiday season in December. I very much appreciate your comments, Mr. Wilson, because we all know how important it is to have caring adults in our community and having caring adults that are available to all of our children. And to remember how important it is to be that caring adult, not only for our own children, but for other children in our community, some that may not have the same support structure for families that all of us or others enjoy. And just the importance of having someone outside, not only your own parents or your own family, but having caring adults in our schools and in our community, supporting all of our kids, is really why we're all doing what we do. And I just appreciate your, your reminders of that, Mr. Wilson. So, thank you very much. It is very late, and so, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and thank everybody for a very productive evening.
Good job, Madam Chair.